Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, October 26th, 2020, School Committee Meeting. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending service provisions of the open meeting law, MGL Chapter 38, Subsection 18, Governor's Order concerning the composed and scheduled meeting of the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via link or number to call in or any similar option. In the event we are unable to accommodate saying, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as possible. No in-person hands of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. Individuals who wish to participate remotely, please dial 1-646-558-8656 and enter PIN 840-7486-2470, or join meeting, and the link is posted on the agenda in the town website. First order of business, and she is remote, we welcome Ashley McGowan. Ashley, if you can turn your mic on and just say hello, that way you're here.
Hello.
She's on site, okay. So for the record, Ashley is here, and she will be our student representative. And Ms. McGowan, if you again turn your mic on, you have a report of the happenings at Oxford High School. Okay, we can skip down when she comes back. Is next hour with a special presentation from Jennifer Dorr of Operation Graduation. She is remote. Ms. Dorr, I go up there.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Very faintly. Can we put a microphone over there? Can we get to a microphone? Maybe, can you go to the table, the front table with that? Okay. Just to open up, Jennifer Dorr has agreed to chair this year's Operation Graduation, along with Co-Chair Jennifer Conley.
Yes, is this better now? Can you hear me any better now?
Ms. Dorr, what I will do, we have a letter in our packet from Ms. Dorr. I will read it on her behalf as we're looking on the mic.
I can't hear anything now, guess.
No one may concern, the Oxford High School Operation Graduation 2020 Committee is asking for your help. For the past 20-plus years, the parents and guardians of the graduating class at Oxford High School have held a special alcohol and drug-free graduation night event to the graduating seniors. This nonprofit organization is known as Operation Graduation. In light of the many recent tragedies involving school-aged drivers, we feel the event is very important to the safety and well-being of the graduating seniors. This event includes renting an overnight facility, entertainment, food, and gifts for all graduating seniors in attendance. At this event, the children are locked in from 9:00 PM graduation night through 6:00 AM the following morning. This year, we'll be hosting several fundraisers and preparing for the big night. Some businesses have provided support in the past through donations of food, indoor drinks, as well as monetary donations. We are asking you to consider providing assistance and support for graduation seniors. Any donation would be greatly appreciated. If you are able to contribute towards the class of 2021's graduation event, which will be held on June 4th, 2021, please contact one of the members listed below to make arrangements for pickup. All donations are tax deductible, there is a tax ID number. Your support will help ensure the success of our Operation Graduation 2021. Thank you in advance for your generosity, Operation Graduation 2021 Committee, again Chair Jennifer Dorr, and Co-Chair Jennifer Conley. There's a letter. Dorr, is the connection better?
No. No, they, they just can't hear me.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, good.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I just wanted to introduce myself, really. And, you know, with everything that's going on with the COVID, there's a lot of fundraising that we cannot do, which I'm sure everybody is aware of. We do, I do have some, some ideas, you know, of past ones that we've done. I believe we've done cookbooks, maybe in 2011, I believe, with a 60% profit. I was thinking that would be a good idea. There's no contact in that, it can all be done online. Flocking, obviously, we might be able to get in a few weeks before freezing, but with Friday snow, I'm not sure. And then I have a few other ideas, I don't know, I don't think Santa's breakfast is going to go on. Maybe that will be spoken about this, this meeting or the next meeting. Basically, that's all I have right now.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dorr, we're really having a hard time hearing you this evening, but just so the public would know, that this is an ongoing effort, that's like you said, for 20-plus years. We see in our packets that you are going back to that Oxford tradition of flocking with those pink flamingos, and we do wish you all the best of luck. Like I said, unfortunately, we really can't hear your full presentation, but if you communicate with Helen and through, through Ms. Nugent at the high school, we can help you send information out to parents and local business supporters. And again, the Oxford Committee, School Committee thanks you for this endeavor on behalf of our children, School Committee members.
Thank you.
Okay. Everybody, you have my contact information and our information, so hopefully we'll stay in touch if you have anything else that we can share at future meetings, again, correspondence, that we will happily read out for you.
Okay.
Thank you again. Thank you. All right. Our next order of business is a consent agenda from September 28th. I'll ask, I'll go through this, I'll come back. Ashley, I'll come back to you after this, so if we can try something through there. What you have in our packets, looks like all members were present. I would ask, entertain a motion to adjourn the minute is September 28th.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Moving second, discussion. All is in favor, please say aye. Aye. I love the record show, five minutes, and the minutes are passed. Ashley, we'll try you again.
Hi, can you hear me?
Again, this is a problem on our side with, with the microphones and trying to get feedback and coming through some laptop portable speakers, so I'm sorry, we cannot hear you, Ashley, but we do welcome you to the meeting. You can try one more time. Wondering if I can connect to her up here. We're going to try something here. Mr. Diocchio is going to try and connect. Okay, and again, being remote, we'll use our web resources. If you do have the report, you can send it to Mr. Nugent and Ms. Coffin and the secretary down at the secretary, just get it to Mr. Nugent, and we can post that for you on the website as well to hear the many good things that are happening, and I know members want to hear about this. So if we can get an emailed report to Mr. Nugent, he can send it back to us. Thank you. I'm sorry it didn't work out, Ashley, but we thank and welcome you to the committee, and we love to hear your input on issues. Our next presentation, Why Kinza for School, presented by... MSN CPNT, she's going to talk us about a program that's being proposed for Oxford.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for your time. I know we said I had a packet, so I don't want to take too much of your time, I just wanted to kind of first field any questions you may have, and anything that didn't seem clear. What it is, my thing was this summer, when we started talking about, oh, we have to take every child's temperature, what are we going to do, what is symptom, what's it look like to monitor symptoms of children, I was trying to look for, what can I do? Or our district, or at least, you know, I am a little biased, I'm at the elementary school level, I have them, and I came across this program, Kinza for Schools. And what it is, is they, it's a smart thermometer in the sense that it's Bluetooth, and it hooks up to an app, and this is what the thermometer is that they get. And on the app, it has like a whole symptom, you know, like you put your temperature goes and, oh, you're, you look great, but do you have any symptoms? And it asks all the typical symptoms of COVID, but it's not just COVID, because this was designed before COVID to trace like flu and strep and other things that are in the, in any school system. So I thought, this could potentially be a great program, because we're asking parents to do home monitoring before sending kids to school. And there's a lot of great apps out there that, you know, do symptoms, and that, you know, the school gets a message saying, oh, no, you know, symptom-free, but what I was concerned about is I might say, you know, take a daily temperature, and I wasn't sure every family had a thermometer. I'm not always sure that my family has a working thermometer, so I said, what a great thing, you know, I'm giving them a tool, I'm giving them an app. Most, both parents are more savvy with their smartphones than I am, and most people do respond to apps and enjoy things like that. I also wanted a program that was private, because I'm not looking to, you know, I want people to buy into this, and I don't want them to think I'm spying on them and I'm stopping their kids at the door and say, wait a minute, mom didn't do anything today, what's going on? So it's a completely voluntary program, which will be valuable to see the interest and where the interest lies, and the fact that I will get it, I can get a report at Clara Barton based on second, third, and fourth grade. It doesn't tell me who the student is, but it might say, oh, you had a student with a fever today. Now, this is open to remote as in-person, so anyone in the elementary level can do this, and what happened was I was able to get a sponsor, it's Lysol, and they're sponsoring elementary schools, so that's why we can this year give to our elementary schools for free. It's ordinarily a $20 thermometer with a $3 fee for the app. So they're willing to sponsor Chaffey and Clara Barton. For whatever reason, Lysol has put their money in the elementary school, but I don't think that's a bad thing, because I think if we can teach good habits now, and how we should be monitoring, hopefully we'll have less illness overall, you know, beyond COVID, you know, that people might think twice before they send a child to school, even if, you know, you know, who is it affecting? I think maybe one thing out of COVID is people have thought of like, how is my child impacting everyone around them? So, so I like the way this melded apps, which a lot of schools are using, and thermometers giving them a tool they can use. So, and that's kind of what I came up with in my research, but, and I figured instead of the district outlaying any costs, let's see if it's even accepted, let's see if parents are interested, let's see if they'll even sign up. You know, while I say we're going to pay for anything, but we're one, we're fortunate enough to have this sponsor to at least start with the elementary school kids. Plus, I also figure elementary school kids, the parents are a little bit closer, monitoring them, you know, well, I don't know of any parents that are chasing their high school kids down, like, did you take them, did you go on the app, you know, tell me what your symptoms are, I'm going to put it on my app. So I figured this was the ideal age to start with, so.
Thank you. Questions? Who's showing?
Questions?
Quick question, thank you for looking into this. I think that's great, I have an elementary student myself. Can you clarify for me just a little bit about what it is you see, what information you get, and what can you do with that information?
Right, so I would get, for instance, you know, when you, so I could get, you know, the temperatures, go to the app, and the app would say, okay, you know, 100 people logged in, there were no fevers. Or it would say, well, of the 100 that logged in, there was a fever in the third grade. It doesn't say male, female, anything, that's all, it's just because they just know the age of the child. It could then go on to say, okay, you had no one with fevers, but you know what, there's five people saying they have kids with headaches, or stuffy noses, or maybe vomiting. And even like what I've run into, I've always said that, you know, strep's always a big thing in the, in the, and I had some kids that I, for COVID testing, and luckily the pediatrician also did strep testing, they tested positive, COVID negative, so I'd also get that. Parents have the opportunity, he'll tell them, you know, you have this many symptoms, you have a fever, you should think about not sending your child to school, you should call your, you know, there is fever symptoms. And as a result, the parent can then go back in and say, hey, my child was diagnosed with an air infection, or my child was diagnosed with COVID, or my child was diagnosed with strep. It's still not going to attach a name to that, but I can see some trends.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's the most, what I read this information, that was one of the areas I looked at, in terms of student privacy. You answered my question right there, so Kinza isn't getting the information that's on the app, there's no information, obviously, it's all donated and free to the elementary level, so if there is that confidentiality.
And that was my huge thing, you know, because people aren't going to buy into it if I can track them down to their house and, you know, that you gave them Tylenol and still send them to me, you know, they don't want to hear that, they want, but I can say to parents, you know, you've been good, I've been able to track, I've seen some fever activity, or I've seen some cold activity, or I've seen some flu, you know. People may come back to me and say, oh, my kid was tested for flu, but not, you know, and wasn't COVID positive, but was flu positive, and they can put that in the app, too. And I do find, for the most part, a lot of my elementary, elementary school parents are good about getting back to me, but some will say, you know, they'll call me and say, what do you think? And I'll say, when in doubt, please call your physician this year, because this is not the usual year. And a lot of them do come back to me and tell me, you know, whether that, you know, the physician did say, you know, we tested for COVID, but they really don't think it's that, or, you know, things like that, so, but I was, privacy, because no one's going to buy into it if it's not private.
Yeah, I think this is great, too, and answered some of my questions. This is my principal hat on here, when you're thinking about offering things to people, what if somebody doesn't have a smartphone? Is there an option for them to somehow participate?
Unfortunately, it's not at this point, but I can also go back to the company and see what they've done. I mean, I have found in our district, I think we had more people that smartphone internet access than they had access for, you know, I think that's why we need to leave out so many Chromebooks and all, but that's also, the way is, I look at this pilot program, I have to see what are the obstacles to it? Was it the fact that, you know, we didn't have enough people with smartphones? Because we do have people that, you know, on all different circumstances, who may not have a smartphone, or choose not, I mean, some choose not to have a smartphone, so, no, we, I mean, we'll definitely look at that, and if a parent comes back to me, I'll bring it back to the company and see, have you thought of this, or how often have you seen it? Because it is in a lot of schools, in a lot of big districts. One district that had a lot of luck with it is Fresno, California, and they're not a very rich district either, so they've had a lot of good luck with it, so I thought, you know, we might as well start in our little microcosm here and see how we do.
Thank you very much.
Just one quick question that you didn't touch on, please, Mrs. Schomer, disinfectant supplies free, flu season supplies for your classroom, that would be for every elementary classroom?
So what they, they send is probably like, they don't know exactly how many classes I have, they just, they ask for numbers of students.
Okay.
So they send, it's like a six-pack of Lysol wipes, and for whatever reason, it's only one spray can of Lysol, I'm not sure why, I don't know why, but I think they'll send something like three or four of those six-packs of those.
Nice.
And it's all Lysol, and that's why you know who the sponsor is.
Right, but that's okay.
Which they, which they should get that little...
Sponsorship.
That's excellent. Thank you for doing this.
Oh, no problem.
Appreciate you looking into it. Sounds like a win-win. Yeah, sounds like a win-win, honestly.
We've also had Kathy put together an FAQ sheet, you know, that certainly we can also give to parents when we talk to them about how they're interested in this.
They have these brochures for you to send out to parents, too, to show some how that is set up.
So we had asked Kathy to come forward with one of the committee's endorsement, hopefully this evening, and then if that's the case, then we're going to begin to roll this out and see how this receives.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the pilot program with Kinza for Schools, sponsored by Lysol, in the elementary schools of Chaffey and Barton.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Be it none, all, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, and also, I would entertain a motion to send a letter of thank you to Lysol for sponsoring this program for Oxford.
Absolutely.
So move. So move, second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, questions? Thank you very much. Thank you for filing this.
Thank you for coming, yeah.
Mr. Packard, next on our agenda, Mr. Packard will be up to talk about, he's a district registrar, about an enrollment update.
How are we this evening, everyone? So included in the packet that I provided you, based on the memo that I wrote, just five documents that I had been working on for the past few years, just to try to throw together all the data that, all enrollment data, based on the kids that we have had in past years, what we have currently this year, and what we have in upcoming years, potentially. Obviously, this year is a bit of an anomaly with just everything going on, so those have kind of thrown our numbers for a loop, but what we're kind of predicting is that next year, we're going to have an influx of all those kids coming back to us, hopefully, with all of the kids that have decided to either homeschool or move to another district, maybe where their parents may work, or some, something that's making their lives easier during this whole pandemic, so.
Nick, can I just ask one question before?
Yes.
When a parent does opt to choose for homeschool, in which they have every choice, too?
Yep.
Does the district or someone following up and say that we have a full hybrid as, as an option? I mean, I'm sorry, fully remote as an option, instead of withdrawing from our roles?
Right, yes, so back before we really had our solidified plan, I think we had a lot of parents reaching out to principals, asking about homeschooling, and I know our friend, Mr. Prazarski, sitting back there, was constantly going back and forth with me, saying that he was telling parents just to hold on, because there was going to be a full remote option that could potentially meet what they need, if they really don't want to send their kids back to school. And so I think advertising that really did hold back our numbers from dropping much lower than they already did due to homeschooling. So due to our plan of having both the hybrid and, and the remote ability, that definitely saved us from having much higher numbers in, in homeschool. So the first document that I provided you guys is an enrollment prediction and enrollment numbers based on the past four fiscal years, this fiscal year and the prediction for the next two fiscal years. It's a little hard to read, a little hard to understand, just because the kindergarten numbers, you'll see there's asterisk and parentheses and stuff. In the parentheses for the past few fiscal years were the numbers that we had received from the town hall based on census data as to what our predicted kindergarten enrollment was to be. Talking with Dr. Nash and talking with other districts, usually they inflate their numbers by about 10% based on how many kids end up moving into the district. For us, it's always been much higher than that, and I don't know if that is because we have people who just don't complete the census, or we have a ton of kids moving in over the summer. I haven't really been able to pinpoint that, but we typically get anywhere between 20 and 30 additional kindergarteners each year, based on the past three years' data. So this year, of course, was just an anomaly altogether. We had predicted about 86 kids, that's with the inflated numbers, and as you can see from these numbers, we only ended up getting 64. So our kindergarten classes is dangerously small. Most of these kindergarteners have just, families have just decided to hold their kids back for another year, have them go for another year preschool, meaning that next year, our kindergarten numbers are probably going to be much higher than what that prediction is for next year. We've had maybe two or three, I believe, that have chosen the actual homeschool option so that their kids don't fall back a grade, but most parents were just, they, they wanted their kids just to do another year preschool, and then move, move on for kindergarten next year. So are there any questions regarding this?
Yeah. So your FY 2022 and your FY 2023 numbers?
Yeah.
How did you, I mean, do you, do we see a trend of move-ins and move-outs that just wash? Because I don't see those numbers changing as kids progress up a grade.
So for this prediction, I kind of just, as kids go through the grades, I just carry them down. We don't see a ton of kids, like, moving in and out between different grades, like, you'll see from the next document that I have, the, the numbers, I mean, the numbers are dropping, but they're dropping at like a steady rate, where it's mostly, I think, because of the kindergarten class sizes dropping so significantly, because we haven't seen very high numbers in almost four years. So that's mostly that information. The only other year where we see a big loss of kids is obviously eighth grade going into ninth, because you got kids that end up going up to Bay Path, or transition to another high school, or, you know, private schools mostly.
So could we, so could we peel back a little bit to the kindergarten number again? So, so are you, are we, is that projection for 22 low? Because if I'm hearing you say, we've only really had, only had a couple kids opt for homeschooling, meaning a lot of kids are repeating pre-K, so is that number even going to be higher?
So...
Because I feel like that one might be low, and we really, that's something that we should be starting to prepare for when we go budget, because if we're going to have an asterically non, asterically higher number than normal based on the lower number this year, we really need to be prepared for that, and I'm not sure if that number reflects that.
So the 92 on the FY 22, the 92 is the number that we got, got from the census, so next year is already geared up to be a big year. The census data for this year was only in the 60s anyway, so we inflated that for the extra 20 to 25 kids that we normally get. So for next year, if we inflated that by the 20, 25 kids, you're looking at 117 kids. If you get those additional 20 kids that just decided not to do anything this year, yeah, we're going to have a very large year next year, is what I'm predicting, so, pending things going back to normal.
Right.
Yeah, we, if you look back, the last time we had 117 students was in 2019, in a projection. So generally speaking, the census is not a reliable indicator, and in each town, it's a little different. In this town, it tends to be, as Nick said, somewhere between 15 or 20 less, whereas most, most districts, it runs around 10% less than what you anticipate. So it's not reliable. I think we had two things, a perfect storm. One, we had just an anomaly of a very low year, just overall, there just weren't a lot of kids who were eligible, age-eligible. And then secondly, I spoke to a lot of, a number of parents who were struggling to send their child to kindergarten or not. It was their first big event for their first child or their only child. And in those conversations, a lot of them really made the tough decision, either one to homeschool, but some just to not send them because of COVID. You know, the interesting part, when I actually said to them, you know, if this were any year to send your child to kindergarten, this is the year with the class sizes, because even in a COVID scenario of hybrid, you're looking at eight kids in a class at the most, you're never going to get this. And in fact, convinced a couple of them, I think, when they heard those numbers, they were, they were more than pleasantly surprised, and felt more comfortable from a safety point of view of sending their, their children. And it made a few of them probably think a little bit, but, you know, I just think this, this is such an anomaly to have 86, but it also marks the trends overall in school districts across the state, where numbers have just been falling every year in school districts. So I think that also is the other piece, too, as you've probably seen in your districts, we're not anywhere near where we used to be five, six years ago in numbers. So we'll, we'll have to gear up for that, you know, obviously, look at that shift, just as we've done before, and, and anticipate the best we can to address that. I know that Mr. P will be doing that in the budget process, planning process.
And just a third option, the third piece that comes in as a contributing factor, is that how many parents or families decided to go the private school route, where they're advertising the private school numbers are passed at their schools? So there's all pieces, there's many moving parts to this puzzle.
Mr. Coonan?
Yes.
So one question I have, is it possible that we could reach out to the community earlier, as opposed to later, for registration for next year?
Yeah.
So we can get a better handle on our numbers before budget is finalized, so we really know what we need to get for teachers?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I know it's still going to be an estimate, because some people just hold back to the last minute, and we've got people that move into town, but it would give us a little bit more to go on than a hunch.
Yeah, I can absolutely start working on getting that done sooner than I usually do. Usually, I start that process in April, I'll start in March, February, if I have to, just to get things set up and ready. I just know the earlier you start, the more people... I just know the earlier you start, the more people that you have that end up dropping out because they either move or they choose a private school or it's like, it happens every year, where we lose a few kindergartners that do the registration process and then before school, they call us and say, oh, sorry, we're not attending anymore. So I don't know if that number will be higher or there might be people who are too cautious because of this year. They don't know what next year's going to look like. They might be too cautious to register. So it's a lot of factors that I would have to start.
We could probably put that in some type of a survey too, you know? If you're on the fence, please let us know, but we want to kind of plan for the budget to make sure we have enough teachers for our district. So please be open, you know, communicate to us your thoughts.
Just circling back to Mr. Cronochelli's question about those kindergartners. My thought was because we are the age-based entry, how many of those people who chose not to send their children to kindergarten this year want them to go to first grade next year? Because they either opted for a private kindergarten or something like that. So fingers, I mean, again, from a developmental standpoint, we're looking at the age more than anything. So.
I know from the parents that I spoke to, many of them told me straight out, my kid will just start kindergarten next year. They're not worried about the whole age thing. They want them to go through that kindergarten process because it is a very developmental year for your kids.
Right, right.
Like I know Mr. P and I have talked about it before, that that year for kindergarten is all about, it's more nurturing, it's more developing their skills. Whereas when they jump into first grade, that's where they start actually learning all like the lessons in the curriculum and stuff like that. So I guess.
So you feel that question as an early childhood professional? Good job, Nick.
Again, I kind of think we should survey people though and get ahead of it and really have our data and not just presumptions.
I think for the town mailing, when we have to send something out to include it with the town mailing, I think we have to do that by November 1st. So I can definitely work on that this week and see if we can get that out with the town mailing. I'll talk to Justin in the town hall about that. But yeah, we can work on something like that.
Please do. Thank you. Okay, any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, so to continue with, to continue with my second. The second document that I provided is the October Sims report setting for the year. This is the current up to this year. I just finished the Sims reports last week. So that number up there for the top row is exactly what we have in Oxford as of October 1st of this year. As you can see from the second half of this document where it shows the comparisons, we lost a lot of kids this year. There's no doubt that we lost 114 kids as opposed to previous years where we normally only lost 50 or 60. But as you can see, it's kind of been a steady 50 or 60 almost every year since FY 10. So there's no doubt that we're losing kids. And I, earlier in my predictions, when I worked on them last year, I had seen it starting to plateau based on the census data and stuff like that. But this year, obviously being an anomaly, we lost a lot of kids and I'm hoping that kind of fixes itself next year.
So one of the concerns that may have widespread budgetary impacts in FY 22 and the concerns that many superintendents have already expressed to the commissioner is this October 1st number. There are two things, as you read my information on the state. If you couple that with the prediction that your October 1st numbers are going to be low to begin with and the fact that the potential of FY 22 could, is going to be more ominous, then we could have some real challenges in this state for all districts trying to do this. And I don't know whether there's going to be some additional monies because of this kind of one-time thing that seems to be happening. I think to be determined as districts start getting really into their budgets and as the state starts planning an FY 22 budget and we start hearing town managers and mayors talk about the impact in FY 22, will there be some kind of adjustment, if you will, in chapter 78 for a one-time that we may see in cities and towns? Because I'm extremely worried, as every superintendent is, because these numbers reflect, you know, such a draw. You look at this compared to the prior years and you see that, it's frightening.
Towards the end of the summer, DESI had sent out a survey for school districts to complete, just asking about their enrollment numbers and the changes that they've seen. Question at the bottom of it, and I was very honest in that comment section and said, you can't be asking those numbers right now because they're changing every day. We had kids coming in left and right, we had kids leaving left and right. It was just too much movement for them to ask for a static number at the end of the summer. And I said that to them. So what they'll do with that information, I don't know. But there's just so many moving pieces this year especially.
Yeah, there are moving pieces this year, but if you look at that data, total numbers, it's clear since fiscal 10, it's dropping every single year. There hasn't been one year of a rise. And to Dr. Nash's point, I mean, this year is even going to be hotter hit. So yeah, those numbers have trended the negative direction for the last 11 years, 10 years.
And it's interesting too, like the next two documents that I have to kind of go hand in hand with each other. These are based on the school attending children report that's done for January 1st numbers each year, where we reach out to districts all across Massachusetts to try to see if they have kids going to their schools that are members of the Oxford School community. And so the first is a chart of all the different schools that they go to, how many kids go, what grades. And so you can kind of see, this is just based on last year's July 1 or 2020's July 1 report. I have reports that go all the way back to FY 10. If I really wanted to, I didn't want to bring all of them in front of me because it's just a lot of information. But so that just right there shows the schools in particular that we're losing kids to. Most of them are private schools. We do have a bunch of public schools that kids are going to. And it's funny, you can actually see where they're, where the kids live based on like census data and stuff, where the kids live. It's all, it all tends to be like the same neighborhood of kids that go to another public school that has school choice. So you know that they're all talking with each other, they're all friends, they all decide to go to the same school together. Why they originally decided to go to another school, that's something we don't know. But then the next page is the actual percentage breakdown and the trend. And you can see where we're losing kids to, you know, to charter schools, to public schools, to vocational schools, private schools, added district private schools. And then the percentages of the kids based on how many total kids we have in the town of Oxford, how many come to our schools and how many are leaving us. And so I know Dr. Nash and I, when we sat down together to look at this stuff, it was quite extraordinary just how many, how many kids that we lose each year to other schools.
I think what's interesting is if you look at this chart, the incentive or the thought that caused us to move the insurance. That's not supported by the evidence. So Dave and I have had a conversation about that actually today. And one of the things that Mr. Nugent is looking at is this whole concept of when we begin our scheduling. Because one of the things that became very evident to me when I was permanent superintendent was that when we built our new high school, we felt that in many instances, our students weren't coming because the building was so old. And we were losing extraordinary numbers to those private Catholic schools that were quick shot on the highway like B.C. High and Zavarian. And so we built our brand new school and lo and behold, the numbers didn't change. So we did an exit interview with parents. And as I said today, what we realized was it was all about timing, that we don't at public schools go out and present our course offerings and what we have until February, it's way too late. They've already signed up in December. So we talked about, should we look at that differently for our ninth graders? Because you're not losing them in eighth grade, they're coming. You're losing them at the end of eighth grade when they have to make those choices for many of the schools that are four-year schools and not five-year schools. So that's one thing to start thinking about. So we've, we've had that conversation that maybe it would make sense to look at, you know, our process and timeline and make some adjustments first. The second thing is I think public schools don't do a great job of selling themselves and private schools do, private schools do. You can't compete if your parents and grandparents and everyone else went to a private school and you're going to go there because you go, you know, for other reasons. But you certainly can make every effort to try to do what you can do so that you can display and show what you have to offer. And sometimes it's doing it sooner than later. So that's one thing that may, may have some impact down the road.
Just had a quick question from my personal knowledge and maybe for those at home. I know there are limited numbers for school choice in each town. What about like an Abby Kelly Foster? I look at the number there and.
So there's the summer lottery where. So no matter how many numbers that they're accepting, if you have a family of five and the first kid starts off going to Abby Kelly, every single one of those kids is most likely going to go to Abby Kelly. It's very rare that I've seen families get split based on charter schools. Seven Hills is the only other charter school that's ever taken kids far as. And I don't exactly know why. I don't know if like their parents work there and that's why they have kids that go. I'm not sure. But Abby Kelly always takes about 25 or 30 of our kids every year.
And we can't cap that number?
No.
So you, the school committee caps that number. The number in Dudley Chelton is almost close to 160. And that's because they use it to really balance their budget every year. So it was an extraordinary number, I know, last year when we were looking for students, actually in October, to come in order to balance our budget and take in almost a million dollars in revenue. So, you know, so you, the school committee votes that. And that's been a longstanding tradition from what I've been told or was told in that district. But, you know, a little bit, little bit high. I've never seen that. You know, you lose, you know, at the high school, I think it was about 22 going there, you know, every year. And when you've got to fill every seat and it's primarily at the high school and you're looking for 160, let me tell you, now there's a challenge, a challenge.
Just for record, Oxford, last two years, we have got that offered schools.
Yeah, and I mean, the past few years that we've had school choice.
I think we did have it last year, Mr. Kuna.
For the ROTC.
Well, you see, but later we, later we were told that that was not legal, that that was not.
You can't programmatically.
That was not legal.
It wasn't correct, but it occurred. And we encouraged students who I imagine could still consider, like, continue on with their program. They weren't asked to leave because it was through school choice. Recognize the wrong.
They just stayed in the program.
Correct. In the school, regardless if they stayed in the program or dropped out of the program, from my understanding. Because legally, it wasn't binding.
Once we get them, we own them.
Correct.
You typically want to, of course, identify grades and, you know, on a yearly basis. And certainly, this information is something that when we get to the school choice discussion later this year, you, you may certainly want to consider as we start looking at where we do have spots.
Dr. Nash, you had mentioned when you were talking about your other district, the exit interviews. Is that something we've ever looked into or done here?
That's something I shared with Mr. Nugent. We did it because we wanted, we actually brought in our ninth, our students leaving, our eighth grade going to the private school and did, took 20 parents and brought them in and asked questions. And it's certainly something you can do. We did it via through guidance. So Dave and I have had that conversation, you know, whether as part of that, what he's looking at in general as part of his, his goals. It might make sense to incorporate that also as another component of looking and saying, why? You know, just so that you know, I think that's an important piece of it. If you don't know, you can't begin to make some changes. You might simply say, that's not going to happen. In Dover Sherborne, 25% of our population lack a private school. And here you have a district that's rated worst in the country, simply because their parents did. We knew the answer to that before we even asked the question. So I think knowing what some of these issues are may help us moving forward. And so as I said, you know, Dave is looking at that and it's part of his goal. So I think it will be something that may inform him as he starts looking at all the rest of our schedule and program studies and such.
But that also should be a conversation with all the other three buildings too. Because the data is clearly showing that this is happening before they get to Dave. And we know, we know the issue at the high school, the vocational, the private schools. You know, we can probably decrease that number to some degree by getting some data from people. But some of that's just, it's going to happen regardless. I'd like to see that conversation be in all three buildings.
We sent this information.
Kind of figure out why it's happening at the lower level too.
So I found it to be pretty interesting when you start digesting it. So we, and Nick has done a great job in accumulating all of this, you know, particularly this sheet. So I started to trend it myself, looking at the K1, 2, 4, where are we losing these kids and to what? You know, so I think that's, you know, they have it and certainly we can talk about that.
The last document that I provided you guys is the homeschool data for the past few years, including this year. So obviously this year is the anomaly. We had, as of the time that I sent you guys this for your packet, it was 42. We're now at 45 and probably going higher from what I understand because some parents have been asking about when their homeschool applications have been approved and stuff like that. So it is now at 45 based on the last. Last year, it was almost an anomaly too, because you see the decrease in almost half the kids going to homeschool. We actually gained a lot of those homeschool kids back. I registered a lot of those kids coming back from being homeschooled. And their reason basically was just that their kids wanted to, like their kids are allowed to participate in like school sports and things like that. So they wanted to be socializing with kids more. Again, this year is totally different, but hopefully we'll get those kids back next year. That's my hope. So that's everything that I have for you. I don't know if there's any other questions.
So this is more like a Mr. Ledoux follow-up question. But now that we have this data in October 1st is past, we had a report. We should have some preliminary understanding of the impact for our budget next year, depending on like what the chapter 70 funds will be that we'll lose. So can we have a rough estimate presented to the committee? Maybe for a follow-up meeting, what the impact to our budget will be because of the loss of students this year?
I'm sure Justin and I can take a look at that.
Yeah.
I can look into it.
It's homework. I apologize. Thank you for our budget discussion, then we can kind of understand how much we're possibly in the hole for.
Well, you don't, you also don't know what you can expect or, you know, 70 is going to be and whether there's going to be any kind of adjustment from the state as a result of that. And we can estimate what it might look like, what impact that loss would have. But until those figures come out, you know, next January, February, March, I mean, we're probably not going to be able to tell you the higher impact of it.
Right. I guess we could go to the trend of the historical data of us not getting as much as we expect for chapter 70 fund and kind of lowball it.
Yeah, the impact is what will the town do as a result of that?
This is true.
As a result of that. And when they see that aha moment, if it, if it happens.
Right.
Then what are they going to do? What's the knee-jerk reaction going to be, you know, when they see that chapter 70 has decreased by X? And that's the $20,000 unanswered question that we have looming in front of us. While it's not going to have an impact this year, it could significantly impact. And I think the town manager and I've had, we had that conversation actually way back in the spring about it. She and I both agreed back then that we didn't think the impact would be this year, but it would be probably in FY 22. So.
And kind of a, I don't know if this is more a question for you, Dr. Nash or Justin, but I'm assuming this would go into our share of Bay Path. You know, there would be some type of us not necessarily having to pay as much towards Bay Path because we have this attrition of students. Correct me if I'm wrong, because we would have less enrollment, therefore less seats going to Bay Path, less assessment towards us as a district.
Well, in this district, if it's like most districts, when they plan the budget, it's a separate figure and they have an estimate of how many students. I'm not sure if they cap it or not, because I've never heard of that. Generally, this is it. And what happens is if it's a large number, then it could very well impact your school department budget as opposed. So I don't know. I'd have to, you know, really look at it and understand if they do it the same way. They usually base it on an ongoing trend over a period of years. This is typically what happens in Oxford or the district with respect to the number of students that attend Bay Path or any of those tech schools. In some districts, they actually do set in an agricultural vocational school, they may set a number because students tend not to go to the agricultural school and they will say 10 slots or something. It just does depend. A lot of it is the history of the way the town has budgeted. And it's a separate, sometimes pool of money. Because I've had discussions with town managers about why can we not access that money? Because I've had discussions with town managers about why can we not access that money? You know, can't you plan better? If you know that you had $500,000 in that fund and the typical past history has been 300,000, then why can't that be moved over when we're asking for more? So I'll have to do a little bit of, you know, I don't know, Justin, if you know how they budget it on the town side?
The town does, uh, pays the bill for Bay Path that's not come out of our budget.
Right.
It's appropriated separately. And I believe it is based on our enrollment. I pitched you the information, it's been a little while since I looked at it, but.
We pay for a seat. We, we're allocated so many seats.
Correct.
And if we, if we have 20 seats, but we only send 12, we pay, we pay the fees for, for that 12. And those seats, and those seats open up to other students in other communities.
Yeah, I think that's what historically happens.
Yes.
And there's been like a downward trend of enrollment there as well.
From Oxford.
From Oxford. But just, I think it's because it's across the state, you know, no specific reason, it's kind of what we're all facing.
I just wanted to thank Nick, I thought that was great. All, all that data, I, I love to see that. I, I don't think I've seen it since I've been on the board and I want to thank you for it. I think it's really great, so thank you.
A lot of hard work, thank you.
Hey, again, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Nugent. Uh, Mr. May, I did speak with Mr. May on Thursday afternoon. He's not available, he's here, but he has forwarded the packet and reading that. It's basically white and white with the MIAA regulations. But Mr. Nugent, you can come ahead and present for Mr. May.
As the chairman said, you have in that packet, um, information, uh, starts with, um, behind, um, the sports that are practicing now, um, some pros and cons about, um, adding, um, to those practices. Um, and then some general, um, out of season coaching guidelines and then more sports specific to the three that have been designated to the fall two season, which happens in February. Any questions or?
Yeah. So this out of season coaching, um, multiple bullet points. Am I hearing that this is in line with what the MIAA is guiding or is this something that we created?
This was created, I could jump in because I think I remember. Uh, I think the district two, uh, athletic directors.
Yeah.
MIAA stepped back, is my understanding. While they created this fall floating season.
Right.
And they recognized that these particular sports, um, in the fall season, football, volleyball and cheer, considered high risk. There was obviously a lot of pushback, um, to come up with some plan, some way that we could do something with these student athletes. And so when I spoke with, I think, uh, met with Kevin a while ago, we were talking about this was potentially going to be developed. I thought MIAA would step up and develop it. But I believe this came out of the athletic directors in general from this, this district that we're in.
All right, it's saying it's not a decision to follow District Two's adap, adaption of the MIAA decision to relax rule 40 for the current act of the year. These practices need to be, so again, with these practices of out of season coaching, and again, there are multiple bullets in here, um, multiple expectations, is this MIAA mandated? Or is this OHS in coordination with other, um, districts, uh, created a plan?
So on the back in the summary, it says, um, there's a point, you know, that all modifications for, for the fall out of season practices for each sport were created and adopted by both the MIAA and District Two. So if you look at, you know, we, we, you know, have some of ours in the, the, the first bullet page, obviously. You know, when we say out of season coaches will be posted on the school screen, coaches running out of school, out of season practices, uh, will be compensated at that rate. So in the beginning, there, there are some of our things that tailor it to what the coaches would need to do. But the sports specific is MIAA and District Two.
So the, the cheer, football and volleyball modifications came out of MIAA working with and, and assigning them to each of the districts. But there are no, MIAA statewide is really out of the district working in conjunction. But the MIAA has not issued statewide guidance for football.
Waited for, and I, I forgot the acronym, but it has something to do with sports and parks or, or they waited for.
DEA.
For them to come up with their recommendations and, and then for the commissioner to say something and then the MIAA stepped in.
Right.
Um, and, um, relaxed rule 40, which is out of season coaching for all sports. And then District Two, um, just changed it to the fall two sports. Not the, not the winter sports, not the spring sports. Um, but everyone has a caveat of it's up to the local districts, um, to decide what's best for, for their student athletes.
Initially, um, we didn't bring this up when it was presented to you because we didn't have guidelines. We, we didn't have anything. We were waiting for something to be developed before you could even talk about it. And the one that was most recently developed was the, uh, first one. And then they came out with more specific ones for each of those three sports. Uh, I think.
I don't know, I, I just feel like, I don't know. I feel like there's so many things in here that we're just trying to deter the possibility of this happening. Could, for all this to take place, you don't have to get the student athletes out there. I mean, you're going to be running out of time. So I guess you kind of answered my question, Dr. Nash, that we didn't have the guidance before this. But, uh, would we have seen this if, if we didn't? Cause I know a few of us on the board got, um, some concerns from parents and, uh, out there about why, you know, some of these, um.
Yep.
Sports that were pushed off. So would we have seen this if we didn't bring this forward? Did this come forward because we brought this to?
No, I asked, I asked the question of Kevin and he indicated to me, Mr. May. And he indicated to me that the few schools that had started, um, should not have started before October 5th and some of them did. And certainly, uh, I can't tell you when these were released, uh, you know, the exact date. Obviously, they weren't released when Kevin presented to you, because we would have incorporated at that time and said, here are, here are some guidelines around that. But they weren't available then. And as I understood it, maybe Dave knows, uh, they were most recently released. Because I think a lot of the, uh, athletic directors were looking toward, uh, MIAA to develop these statewide. Most superintendents were saying the very same thing, there should be statewide. MIAA is the governing body for school sports. They should be stepping up to the plate. So after EA released those guidelines, then we were, they were waiting. And I think as I understood in my conversation with Kevin, that didn't necessarily happen. They created the floating seasons and all of that. And they looked more toward saying to each of the districts, you work on these. So that's kind of my understanding, I may be off on that.
Dr. Nash, I'll tie mine in as.
Yep.
I was privy to those conversations in my former role, which I gave up about three weeks ago as a golf coach in City of Worcester. And we, we would get weekly updates from the MIAA, from athletic director. And there was nothing, there was top of it. It was up to the districts to come, come up with the plan for this out of season coaching. And so, and what I'm seeing in here is very consistent with the emails that I read for a long time on, on, um, and the, the ones were also part of Department of Public Health. They're working at the city doctors and they came up with a district, in this district too, it was very, very consistent. On what's allowed, who's allowed and a number of factors.
And, and this package is to inform, not to deter. I mean, if it was to deter, we would have our own thoughts and recommendations and that's pretty.
And also, it's very important, it is voluntary, voluntary for the coaches. The coaches, we cannot, if we do move forward with this, we cannot require the coaches to conduct their practice. If one of the three teams cheer football, volleyball, and the head coach decides, you know something? This isn't for me. It's over. We, even if we, if, if we did approve that, there's no mandate. It's volunteered by the coaches, volunteered by the students, you know, if the parents want it and the parents can't, can't get involved. Now, you can't go out and hire outside coaches, because it has to, it's, has to be consistent with the particular program.
Yeah. Um, then I did, so the families that I hear, heard from were more concerned with their student athletes falling behind, student athletes of other areas, especially when it comes to potential scholarships or anything like that. Um, and I got a great answer from Mr. May and Dr. Nash on that. So I, I guess my question, we talked about the, the first set of bullets were, were, um, developed here. Are they similar to what other districts have? And I'll, I'll give you the specific ones that I guess I'm concerned about. So the last bullet in the, the first section, recommending a limit of 25 student athletes to each session. Is that an Oxford decision or is that a District Two decision?
That's a District Two decision, that's not Oxford.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that was there. And is the one just above it, that workouts to be conducted in pods or cohorts, five to 10 athletes always working out together. They're not required to have a coach for each pod, are they? I mean, I could send 10 kids over there and 10 kids over there, is that?
Recommendation is one coach per 10.
One coach per 10.
But that would be, yeah, so anything over 25, they would request two cohorts.
Okay.
But, you know, the recommendation would be a coach for 10. But the coaches could, you know, rotate around a different pod as they're, as they're practicing.
Okay, but the 25 is consistent with what other districts are doing around us, as far as you know?
Yes.
Okay. And the 10 sessions is between now and the season, I assume, might be between now and February or is it?
November 13th.
Number seven. If 10 sessions is between now and November 13th?
Start, right. It started in a whole month.
November 17th.
I, my, my initial conversation was November 13th, a Friday, I believe that is.
Cause out of season coaching practices.
Yeah, so, so that changed, so.
Monday to Thursday, beginning on Monday, November 2nd. So this is for, just for the Oxford piece and including on November 17th.
So they've got to be down by November 17th.
What's that?
November 17th is our date.
November 17th is.
Just for Oxford?
I'm not sure if you want to.
You can have no more than 10 sessions total.
Yeah.
And I believe if I remember, the window of opportunity was limited. And as I said, my initial notes, I'm trying to find them, what included the 13th.
Yeah, I guess my only point there, that kind of, we had a time to get 10 sessions.
Well, I'm not sure, um, that you can, quite frankly. I mean, that's one of my concerns too, you know, that the shot in timeframe for the athletic director to get space, um, make sure that people would be available to solicit students who may want to participate. And of course, given some of the factors that are happening right now, uh, my number one concern is safety.
Sure.
I am, you know, as you know, we had, uh, our first, uh, case at the high school of a, of a positive, um, community member. And, uh, we have also two others who are close contacts. So I have to always look at safety as number one. So, you know, timing is everything and we're seeing, uh, a rise in the, in this in the state. So, you know, putting more students together and bringing more could provide, you know, certainly opportunities for those students. But I'm also worried about the, the safety and health factor.
I'm going to lean on this. First of all, I believe. When I would, I talked with this, I talked to Mr. May and I was 100% for this. Everyone knows I play football, I dig, I coach football. And, and Dr. Nash had a conversation, well, 10 sessions, you didn't get nothing really. What are you going to accomplish in 10 sessions? So I informed her, I said, well, what if colleges have eight, 10, 15 spring football? That's where you put in your offense and your defense is your terminology. Yeah, it's more conditioning, but you get people together and doing, and doing good things. Obviously, there'd be no hitting involved in this, but the cohorts, you can get a lot of work done. If someone thinks that because of missing this, that a potential scholarship, I don't buy that argument out. Right now, coming to tonight, my, my feeling on this is probably not to approve. Based upon the data coming out of Webster and Leicester. Just driving here tonight, coming back from Connecticut, I saw a beep twice with alerts. Mass notify. Um, it's beeping, I'm like, what's it beeping for? So I got here in front of Webster Sky High, Leicester Sky High. We recently went to a four district, I think our numbers may be coming back a little bit more right now. Right now, with that and flu season, this pandemic is, is getting really very serious. So I don't know if I'm in favor of this right now. I know there's a lot of work to be done and there's a lot of good things that can come out of this. I think getting the kids out of the house, being involved in something in their sports, that's excellent. When I talked to Mr. May about this, he indicated that many, and Mr. Nugent, you probably know as well, many of the student athletes impacted have already gone to another sport. A lot of males going to football, I'm going from football to soccer and field hockey. So those players would be, would be ineligible based upon the system that's placed here now. Yes, it would be great to get more guys, more people involved. But I think right now, let's, um, let's use our practice in field space and spread kids out and try and keep kids off the campus, which is against everything I'm, I believe in. But after school is, is not make this a, a social hub, because it's going to happen. That's my, that's my indication on this, it's my feeling, but it will come to a vote at this board.
So just a quick question about the alerts that you're receiving, because I believe yesterday Governor Baker was on the news talking about the fact that schools do not seem to be the spreading factor. So I'm curious to know if those alerts, is that the towns are rising or is it that the school population's COVID? Just for clarification, because I, I think it was yesterday, it may have been the day before, but, um, and he's actually recommending that schools go into session in person, which seems to be in exact opposition to what's going on in the state. So I'm curious about that. And, and you know, the other thing about sports and not just football, um, and I always talk about the underdogs. There's a lot of kids who come to school for sports and sports alone. And they only do the academics because they have to in order to participate in the sports. Um, the year of loss, you know, it is what it is and most of the schools aren't going to have, um, the same years, obviously, that they've had in the past. And all of the teams will suffer as far as their abilities and skills because of this. I happen to be for it, because I think that football is outside, we have all of these restrictions. I think the schools, and I've been talking this to everyone I talk to, um, the schools have done an amazing job of following protocol and keeping members, well, again, if it's not being spread through the schools or through the younger populations, maybe that's a part of it too. And maybe I'm just feeling like we're doing a great job, which, which would be wonderful. I, I just worry about those kids that need something outside of their houses, especially if they are on full remote or, you know, kids who for whatever reason didn't get to go to school on there in school week. So now they're isolated and I hate that, especially at a high school level.
Oh, September, and so you said coming tonight, I, I read this, I'm like, you know something, we can deal with it. The alerts came from mass, from Massachusetts government.
Right, that's what I was curious about, is that?
Mass government, it's, it was a mass government alert.
Right.
It was like, I heard my phone, I don't know if it was an anger alert, because we get that beep, beep or 20 or something coming through for both Leicester and Webster. Well, that's both sides of us. And eventually it's going to start jumping out.
It's right here in town too, I mean, we know that and it's inevitable.
It's inevitable, it's inevitable. But I think with numbers are getting that high, I really think that we, I, I would rather err on the side of safety right now.
Yeah, did, did you have your hand up there, I think you did.
Yeah, my only thought is, you know, if, if everything's supposed to start in the beginning of November, which we're, we're very close, how do the kids get trained on all these procedures they're supposed to follow? How do they get, you know, appropriate orientation so they understand what's required of them?
Well, that is why I think, we may not be able to get that, we will probably not ever get 10 sessions in, um, in that timeframe. My original, um, recommend football was 10, um, 11, 13. So this is what Kevin had given me, I know I'd seen it somewhere, so that either has changed. But there is a short window, whatever that is. The maximum, I believe, is, is 10 sessions that you can have overall, um, for your sport. If I might just answer Mrs. Forbes' question. So we've had two confirmed, um, cases in our school. Uh, one, uh, that, uh, happened and the student was not, uh, the community member was not, uh, in our school at that time. And the other one was recent, so, uh, so that's, you know, been our trend, uh, at this point in time.
Right, thank you.
So just a couple of quick points to that point to Dr. Nash and, and Mrs. Shawna could probably back this up. I mean, traditionally in the schools, you don't start to see, you know, the cold and flus really start to hit till about November, December, January. So with respect to Governor Baker's comment that it hasn't spread in schools yet, well, yeah, it's traditionally, it doesn't, you know, colds and. yeah, it's traditionally, it doesn't, you know, colds and flus and stuff don't spread till we get a little bit colder. But just back to this, and I hate to keep belaboring the point here, but, you know, the timeline from the 2nd to the 17th, is that a District Two decision or is that our decision?
That would be our decision if we move forward.
Okay. So a couple of the concerns I have is back on the 28th, I guess it was of September, I believe, we approved the plan that included practicing for football, cheer and volleyball. So for me, there's a couple of things at play here. Yes, some of our fall athletes who play those sports decided, because I had no other choice at this time, there was no plan, I needed to go do something, I wanted to be active. So for us to hold them responsible that they cannot participate potentially in the sport of their fall choice that they normally would have, based on this, I think is not fair. So I would really like to hear a little bit more about that. Is that an MIAA rule based on this? Because those rules have relaxed. So that's a concern for me, because we approved the plan. And to, I think it was September's point, I mean, a lot of kids need that balance and for us to take that opportunity away. Yes, I get the numbers are going up, but we're asking kids to come in four days a week to school. So I think we have to make this work. I think posting to school spring for the positions of coaches, having them have to go on a family IDs, have the updated physicals for practices. I do appreciate the fact that there's more in here that they can do than I thought would be allowed. So I think that's a great thing. It's more, I envision it just as a lot of conditionings for those seasons, getting the groups together, doing some conditioning, you know, maybe getting a little bit more into it, but there are other things. I don't know, I just feel like it's, we approved something on the 28th, whether it was District Two or MIAA waiting for guidance for these three particular sports for a practice routine, and we're just getting it now on October 26th. I just don't think it's fair to the kids who, you know, this is their thing, and who knows, they might not even have a season. So to not have anything right now, I think is not responsible of us as a board. And again, I appreciate the work of Mr. Nugent, Mr. May. I feel some of these things could be peeled back a little bit to not make it, and again, I wasn't insinuating, Dave, earlier, that you guys weren't trying to provide this opportunity. I think it's well laid out and I like it. I just think there's some areas, maybe we could relax it a little bit. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
I just want to just comment that quickly. Also, I would not approve any plan unless an athlete had a full physical before they were put out.
I believe this requires for all sports anyway.
Well, practices, this is different, that things have been relaxed.
It is still.
I think the physical is a supervision of the coach required to run.
That you, there's so many people, athletes have dropped.
So when you have a frisbee club or something here like that, you require physicals and you require going to family ID? We don't do that.
This would be MIAA sanctioned.
But relaxed, you said relaxed.
They relaxed.
What they relaxed was rule 40.
Again, I can live with physicals, that wouldn't be one that I would debate to the, but the school spring application for coaches, I just, that that to me is over the top. And the kids who are in it, huh?
Are we paying them?
I think the paying was more than I thought. This would, as to Chairman Koonen's point, I think it's, I talked to the coaches before we advertised and say, are you willing to do this?
Yeah, that's fine, it may be involved here.
I think the reason that Mr. May and Mr. Nugent put that on would be if we were paying them, we would want to post it to make it equitable that anyone could apply, since we've not appointed any one of these coaches, because these seasons are starting in February. But if, if indeed we chose not to pay them, then it would be up to, you know, the athletic director to approach those individuals.
Right, because technically now they have a season, but it's not till February. This would be outside of their
Right, yeah.
Their spiking in season. This would be something that coaches would volunteer to do, to try to keep kids engaged.
Well, it does say that there's a going rate in this handout that we got, so they are getting paid.
No, we created that piece, as Mr. Nugent said, that those two posted on school spring and that rate was what we discussed that potentially we could afford and we might do, but it's again up to the committee. I know that I had some discussion with the chair and indicated that a lot of times coaches will volunteer for this, where it's such a small window of time.
It's a very small window, I mean, discussion included. If you're the coach of record and you want to volunteer for this position, I think it's fine. If we started, I think it's a very gray area, because if you go to posting on school spring, if the coach of record does not want to do that, there are some other member of faculty, wouldn't know, does it come down to seniority where it's really not the intent of the coaches and their players getting together. I think that the intent of the MIAA is, you can't pay unless you post it. So if it's going to be a volunteer basis, then that's where I think the intent of the MIAA was.
Have there been any discussions with the three coaches? We know where they're at?
I have not.
I'm sure Mr. May, I'm sure Mr. Clarkson would jump on the opportunity. And I, those three have really done a great job building up the programs. I understand all of that. I just can't, as the principle of no other health risk. Because we have 82, 82 athletes participating in fall sports that are, you know, have competitions. We could double that. If we get into quarantining, it's game over. Literally, you have figured it out.
Yeah, I would just say that there's a much larger number of kids in town playing baseball and softball for the past three months and have done so safely. I think everything happening outside really limits that risk, especially they're not allowed to, you know, meet in locker rooms and use the weight room and those kind of things. I think, I think we owe it to our kids to give them this opportunity.
That's why I'm here tonight, and that's why you're voting, so.
Any further discussion? Draw the motion.
I'll make a motion to allow the up to 10 practices as defined by the District Two slash MIAA slash Oxford proposal. And following the guidelines that forth perhaps with a little bit more leniency, as Mr. Cronocholi had suggested in some of those. I think this plan is tough to do, but I think as Mr. Burke said, we owe our kids this opportunity. We need to do everything we can. So I don't know how to word the motion to accommodate a little bit of flexi, I don't want to use that word, but.
Well, I think we really have to, because your motion would include this entire packet.
Okay.
For this evening, so you have to go through and make modifications to the voter points as to what those would be in terms of leniency.
Okay. Dave, do you want to make the motion?
Those would have to be within that motion.
Yeah, because I was thinking the same thing you did, and I was going to just say, hey, listen, without getting into, because if I, if we did that, we might delay it. So I was thinking just approving it as is, but I totally respect what you were saying over there, because I don't want to take the time to have to go through each one of them, but I like how you phrased it with the potential for potential leniency based on, obviously, health supersedes everything, so.
Right. So I would like to make a motion to accept this as presented with the potential for leniency if health and safety protocol allows.
Motion for, I have a second.
I'll second that.
Second discussion.
I guess my only follow-up to that is I just, putting in that potential for leniency makes me feel uncomfortable personally, because I'm comfortable with approving this the way it is at this point. I'm not comfortable with putting it out there that we could have leniency and things could be changed, because then that makes me feel like at a whim, somebody could potentially change some of these things without me or this committee approving it. So.
I'd like to rescind my motion then, and reword my motion to accept this proposal as stated.
Hold on, we'll resume in a second as well.
Yep, resume in a second.
Okay, thank you. So now I'd like to make the motion to accept the proposal.
And I will second that.
The proposal is printed, move in second.
May I just ask, if I might, Mr. Chair?
Please, please.
The question that was raised about voluntary versus paying, I think we need to clarify that, because if we don't, I, just posting it, you're going to take this week and selecting and doing all of that, so you're going to be behind the eight ball. If you remove those two bullets, then, you know, it just gives us a little bit speedier process and allows the athletic director to approach, you know, those who might have been coaches in the past, because coaching is a year-to-year appointment, as I always remind people.
Right.
Dr. Nash, if we remove those two bullets and the coaches decide not to do it, can it still be posted without coming back to us?
Uh, no.
So can we word that so that the first priority is to ask the current coaches their willingness, and the second priority would be to post it if needed?
Well, okay, good.
Can we? I'm asking that.
I need to.
Now it's getting, we're kind of all over the place here. I thought, in the discussion, what I've heard, if we're not posting the school spring, will it be based upon a volunteer with the coach show?
Right.
It would be in the amendment to the motion made by September in second, or of course, you made it, I'm not sure who made it.
Yeah.
To remove bullets four and five, which we always, coaching positions, we posted on school spring. Coaches running always cards, we compensate at $30 an hour, replaced with the bullet, coaches will be a member of the current coaching staff, and tell me if I'm wrong, this is, I think this is where you're heading at a volunteer, at a volunteer level during this period.
Yeah, I guess my only concern is if the coaches decide they can't do it, maybe they're busy with something else.
Then maybe we don't have it.
Let me just have it.
We just don't have it.
I'm not really comfortable personally, having somebody that's not been a coach traditionally in this sport, stepping up to be a coach. I, you know, I would like somebody that's very consistent with practices in the past and understands the new expectations. I don't want anybody to just coach your kids on a whim.
Right.
Right.
And I don't think it's starting to be a problem, truthfully.
Yeah, just to point clarification, there are no coaches that have been appointed for these three sports. So currently you have no coaches.
Right.
And you wouldn't have coaches, although I understand you've had former coaches who would probably be the candidates who would be applying when the season comes. We, you know, obviously held off on appointing, we typically would appoint all coaches for the entire year, but not knowing at that point in time what was going to happen, we simply went with appointing the fall coaches. We wouldn't have to, you know, rescind those letters. So I just want to just mention that.
You could add to that in the next bullet, which is coaches will have update certification, CPR first aid concussion protocol, as well as completion of the COVID-19 training course on the NFHS, National Foundation of High School Learning Platform, as well as state certified, or MIAA, is it MIAA? Mr. Nugent, help me with that, and Mr. May is on here. Our coaches, MIAA certified with the MIAA course, or is that a state certification? I know, Mr. May, I know we get that report every year, and Mr. May has a great job with that.
No, it's through the MIAA and it's the concussion protocol.
No, 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 not the concussion, the required coaches course. The coach.
Our coaches.
That I'm not.
Our coaches, Massachusetts, are required to attend the coaches, to attend the coaches course.
But I think that's a one-time, is that a one-time thing?
It's a one-time thing, so you have a certified coach.
Yes.
So a certified state coach. Which is state certification. And that's through the MIAA, which I know Mr. May sends that report out every year to us to make sure that we can be certified, otherwise I think it's, all of our, all of our coaches are MIAA certified. I'm not sure if that's the exact word, but they've taken the course. Okay, so you could amend the motion?
I need to amend my motion, please. I'd like to amend my motion and make a motion to accept this as written with the exceptions of bullets four and five. And to include in bullet six, that we would be looking for our coaches to also be certified through MIAA.
Right, certified in their sport.
Of course, certified in their sport through MIAA.
MIAA, and then also to replace those bullets that they will be on a, from the current coaching staff at a volunteer level.
Okay, and add on the volunteer level, please, to my motion.
I'll still second that.
Okay, just, I mean, obviously, I said I'm not in favor, but I will support the committee.
All right, just, are we still in discussion though?
Yeah, it's still in discussion, yes.
All right, so I'm just going to, you know, Mr. Nugent, I'm sorry, I know you. So what are we going to do about bullet two? Is bullet two, again, is that a MIAA slash District Two decision? Where do we have, do we have wiggle room in that again? Because some of the student athletes had no other option if they were a cheer, volleyball or a football player. They had no other option other than those sports indicated. So are we going to hold them harmless if they decide to switch?
I don't know if that has anything to do with bona fide player. I think it does set a precedent that regardless of if we feel that they didn't have enough choices, they still made a choice. And if they were going to, you know, quit the team that they're on, I think what precedent is that setting?
That's what I'm saying, so is there flexibility for them to manage both?
I don't know if it's bona fide.
Is there flexibility for them to manage both?
I can ask Mr. May that.
You know, especially, you know, potentially where with field space, some of this stuff might be done at, you know, evening hours potentially where.
I was in the impression that was an MIAA.
Yeah, I was too.
It wasn't an.
Well, it is a rule in normal circumstances.
No, I'm sorry, in this current situation, I believe they did come out and say that if you're playing a fall sport, you can't participate in the fall.
You can't take these.
So did all, okay, again, I just didn't know if all kids knew that, if all kids knew there was going to be a plan for these three sports. That's where I have a little bit of an issue.
Yeah.
Because if I was a kid, I would have wanted, I would have jumped in any of those sports just to be active. And now I have the opportunity to go to my favorite sport, but I can't because I'm already committed to a team. And to Mr. Nugent's point, I wouldn't want to promote anybody to leave after they've made a commitment. You want them to follow through. So is there wiggle room? Right, that's all. And seeing we've all had to think out of the box since March 13th, I mean, of, you know.
We can confirm that and make sure that that pretty much has been set or established. Again, I have not seen any document that says these are MIAA guidelines. So just be aware, this is not a document that says MIAA. I just don't know, because I haven't seen one. So if anyone had one, we would have included in the packet. It's been my understanding that they may have had discussions as the representatives of their different districts with the MIAA, but then it was hands-off. Clearly hands-off. The MIAA waited for this and did not step up to the plate. This is the document that the state released, the EEA, that set all these guidelines. But the MIAA decided to wash their hands evidently of that and give some general overview, and at least the ADs from these different districts stepped up to try, that's my understanding of what has happened. And I question why the MIAA, for whom we spend, pay a great deal of money, each district, did not do that. As a former member of the board, I question that. I will continue to question that, because I think that was their role.
Shame on them.
Yeah, exactly. So we've had ADs who tried to make this work.
Right.
Right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank goodness, but, so.
My last, okay, my last question is, I don't see in here, in terms of spectators or parents. Is there a board in here that as well as that, there should be no spectator or parents on the field?
I believe that's in the school sports policy currently for, I mean, for practices, parents aren't there, but I think for games, it is only one spectator, but
It is.
I think that's in the school policy right now for sports, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, but it's really specific to this out of season coaching in terms of practices, that no spectators nor parents will be allowed in the field. Want to amend the motion? I would amend the motion to add a bullet that stating that it would be players and coaches only, no spectators or parents.
Okay.
I would give that.
Okay, do you want me to reword?
Yeah, so I need to step on that.
I can second that amendment.
Perfect.
Do we have the opportunity to provide the space, Mr. Nugent, for all of, for these three other groups? These football, cheer and volleyball?
In some form, I'll be, yes. I mean, we have to still consider that, the Board of Health doesn't want us on the fields at night because of Triple E. But we'll do what we can to make it work, and if we can't make it work, we'll make it work.
Right.
Please remember the clocks are changing next week at 4 o'clock.
Yeah.
Is there a school committee policy on weekend practices? I don't recall.
Nope.
Weekend, I mean, probably in this case encouraged. For weekends.
Simply because of space.
And the space problems, you have some people on campus.
Daylight longer.
Um, obviously with that, we don't have a policy. Chair, I would request that, um, refrain from Sunday morning. If, if people decide to attend, we get their services.
Right. Before noon time.
That might take care of bullet two then, if they do that stuff on the weekends. Wouldn't have to leave your sport.
We'll try, I mean, obviously for transportation for the kids and everything like that, we'll try to make it during the week. But, and Mr. May has done a great job scheduling, um, the competition sports, um, football one. You know, so they're awake, you know, JV and varsity are practicing for field hockey together. And, you know, they're playing separately, there are home and home games, home and away games. And so I'm sure he'll be able to, to figure it out.
And remember, these are the guidelines outlined, if it's, if it is voted by our school committee. Again, the individual coaches have discretion of scheduling their practices as they normally would during the rest of the season. That, you know, I don't think Mr. May himself and the coaches will work, come up with a practice schedule. Anything else?
Could I just ask Helen to write that for me, please, my motion?
Sure. Uh, to accept the package of the proposal as written, except for bullets four and five. Include a new six, that the coaches are certified in their sport through MIAA. Uh, with removing four and five, it would be on a volunteer level. And then with the amendment by Mr. Coonan, players and coaches only, no spectators or parents. Um, and that's it.
I think you got it. All right.
I was worried about it when I typed it out.
You got it on.
With discussion, okay.
All right, thank you, Helen.
Further discussion? Roll call vote. Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Dr. Cooley?
Yes.
Now, as chair, unfortunately, I'll be voting no instead of earlier, just I think where the numbers, where they're going. And, you know, we can stand back, but I just, I just think. What's the pass this morning, Robert? One, two on one, again. Thank you, Mr. Cooley.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. We appreciate it.
And Mr. May.
Mr. May.
Mr. May.
I talked to him on Thursday afternoon and he explained what, he explained what, he would not be here, so. Okay, we have policies up to me, uh, so, can I feel it? How do you want to go?
We have some policies, uh, for a first read, and if you potentially wanna waive the first read for approval, that would be fantastic. We have policy KCD, public gifts to the schools for your review this evening. The policy CBB, recruitment and appointment of a superintendent. And this is to just give us an overview of, um, procedures that we should be considering having replaced here. And then, um, some updated language in, uh, policy CBI, evaluation of the superintendent. What is in yellow is then.
It's new.
The update.
Uh, we've had them in our packet. Uh, questions?
Uh, everything in yellow on the CBB and the KCD, um, is there anything that was deleted or are these just new policies you're bringing forth?
It's new additions, so.
Just new additions?
Yeah.
Because we did have a gift to the school policy prior.
We did, and it wasn't the same, it wasn't KCD, I can't remember the.
Okay, so these are new.
The waters.
New light, okay. Will that policy be replaced with this policy?
No, this would be in addition to that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? I do thank you for your hard work on this, um, particularly on the recruitment and employment of the superintendent. And that is coming up, I'm talking about a little bit later this meeting, I think I read that, I think it's very mindful, especially to the fact of, the fact of matter is, when you're, when you are going under a superintendent search, it should be under the rules that the standing committee sets. And that is something that ten years ago was put in place. And so as we're going in, we, we set our rules. I really, I, I really thank you for being that, and then the evaluation of superintendent as much as you'd like. Anything else? All right, I didn't say the motion to adopt policies KCD, CBB, and CBI with waiving of second reading.
First reading. I'll make the motion. That's waiving of the first reading?
First reading.
Right.
Oh, first reading.
But I'll make that motion.
Additional readings.
Yeah, all readings.
Waiving of second reading, yes.
Yeah.
This is the first reading, and this is voted tonight, and it will be approved.
And, yep, I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote, Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Cooley?
Yes.
Also, yes, I have any comments and KCD, CBB, and CBI, I'm putting them. What's going on? The business office, please.
Orders today.
Thank you, Mr. Coonan, members of the committee. Uh, the first item I have here this evening, um, was to talk a little bit about transportation. Our transportation provider has approached me a few weeks back. Um, they want to discuss amending our current contract. The reason being is, uh, we do not have school on Fridays and therefore are not paying them for transportation on Fridays. Same time, we missed quite a few days of school in the beginning of the school year in, in September. So they approached me about payment for those days, to which I did reply that at this time, I would have to speak to the committee first before we amend any, any contracts. I know we had some technical limitations when we first started, so I'm not sure if RJ from Durham was able to join us. But I'll just give you a little bit more information from what I have. The first proposal he has sent me has been, they've requested fifty percent of their normal contracted, normally contracted rate for, uh, the month of September, the days that school was closed. And then for ninety percent on Fridays, for the remainder of the school year. Again, I have not responded to him, but I said I would bring it to the committee and at least give him an opportunity to, to speak to the committee and let, you know, you folks know the reasons why, um, they're looking for payment. I will caution the committee when I did look back. So we, we did make arrangements back during the initial school closure, uh, in March, to make them whole, if you will, to the best that we could. That legislation has ended, that that was only good, the governor only granted that through June thirtieth. So without an amendment to the contract to, to alter the types of services they're providing, technically would be, you know, against mass, mass state law to, to payment, for payment for no services rendered. That's kind of where I'm coming from when I have these conversations with them. Are we opposed to it? No, I mean, I, I get to the other side of it, which would be, you know, uh, some of the things RJ has expressed to me, the biggest one is just driver availability. Because, I guess from his point of view, the, um, drivers are only working four days a week. So he says, well, it's gonna be difficult to recruit and retain drivers when, you know, someone's only offered four days a week of employment. So I, I understand both sides of it. I, I guess my opinion at this point was I don't see why there's any reason why we can't come to an agreement. Um, it's just, what's, what's that kind of a tit to tail? So RJ, you there?
He's not listening to the, none of the participants. We have two anonymous people on here, so I don't know if one of them is him.
If I might just add one piece, that for that fifth day with a request for some percentage of payment, we would have to have an agreement that there was some type of services, ancillary services, and that's what we would have to work out. I just wanted to be very clear, um, to the public, that this is not what we, what happened the last, um, spring when the law was waived and districts could do that. So we would have to sit down, and my hope and Justin and I'd hope this evening that you could listen, um, to RJ and he would explain the types of ancillary services that they've provided in other districts that use Durham, like Framingham, and I think one of the Hamptons.
North Hampton.
North Hampton. Uh, and Worcester, of course, is not using them at this point. But as they move forward with any form of, uh, in-person learning, um, they are also talking about having to negotiate something with them. We also pointed out to you that this is the end, or in that memo we sent to you, that this is, um, the end of our, um, contract with Durham and how difficult, um, contracts, uh, and putting them out there and trying to get, um, individual bus companies to bid, has, uh, limited many school districts in receiving numerous bids. I wanted you to be aware of that.
So, thank you.
Is she available?
RJ, you with us?
I, I am. So I, I'm, I'm struggling with technology here. I tried going through the phone, tried going through my computer. I backed back out. Now I'm actually back on my cell phone. So I apologize. I was yelling at a computer on my cell phone for the last couple of minutes. But, um, I did actually hear you present my, my, the issues, not the issues, but the questions that I had, Justin, and I appreciate that, and Dr. Nash as well. Um, and again, uh, members of the school committee, I appreciate the time of even being able to speak to you all. And I think Justin did articulate the, the issues that we have in here, is that it's, it basically, at this point, just trying to keep the drivers who we have here, being able to stay with us. And that's the struggle with they're having at this point now, is with, as Justin said, with four days a week, they're not able to really put the kind of, the dollars together that they need to continue to survive working with us. Most of what the entire debt industry is based, uh, their life on their bills and their, and their revenue on is a hundred and eighty days and five days a week. So when that actually gets taken away from them, it's, it's, it's difficult. So, um, the drivers that you have are terrific, that, I mean, I'm, I'm lucky to have the ones that are there, that most of them are, are, are community members. And, and they're wanting to stay with us. It's just at the point now where, you know, what can we do to help them? And that's what we're coming back to the communities, you know, such as yourselves and other ones that we work with, asking them to, to help in a way to keep us funded so we can keep the drivers payroll moving. So when we do get past this, which I hope we do get past, and, and I'm optimistic the fact will be sooner than later, we have a full complement of drivers that will be able to presume back to any kind of your transportation needs. And I think Dr. Nash is touching upon that, when she was saying that, you know, we have to be doing something for the service. And what I've offered to many districts, and obviously you'd be one of them as well, is that we, we wanna be a transportation provider. And, uh, and we are right now, you know, currently your schoolless transportation provider. But there are other things that can be transported with us, we're more than willing to do. You know, examples, we've done, we've, I've gone even to the point of we've had, um, you know, um, drivers go out to certain, of like, you know, dead space, spots and sat there for a few hours. We've been moving, you know, um. You're breaking up a little bit. What are you doing for that fifth day? We can say we're doing this, or we're available to do anything really at that point. So, um, I, I think I'm kind of beating the same drum and going over some of the points that Justin already brought up. So, um, I'll thank you for my time, and I think I'm gonna try to mute my phone at this point. If you guys have any questions, I can unmute it.
Yeah, could.
Yeah, Justin, really, I, um, actually, we do have a couple of questions. My first question to you would be, if we're going to pay the drivers for the fifth day, would they receive a full day's pay as they would for the other four?
Yes, absolutely. So what we would do is we would base them on their average hours for the, for the, uh, for the school week, or for the day. There is a minimum, because we, they're union drivers for us at this point, at, at, at this, at this point here. And, um, they're given a minimum of hours for that day. So if their route fell below that, we would pay them at least their minimum due to their CBA contract.
Thank you. Mrs. Forbes?
Mrs. Forbes stepped out.
I'm sorry, this, this is Griffin guy.
So one question I have is if, if we consider like a fifth day, maybe, um, Durham would consider doing all our transportation for sports to and from school, you know, for the cost of that fifth day. So.
So I, I, I mean, and I, I like the idea of even coming to something from an agreement with that. But the problem that we have is that on, on the days we'll be running athletics, the, the cost that would be incurred for that, driver wages and, you know, fuel and everything else that go along with it would still be incurred at that point. So what, at this point here, as we're trying to do is find funding for the fifth day, with no revenue coming in, I can't generate payroll. And even I can appreciate the idea of thinking outside the box, and I love that. Um, I, I, I couldn't personally agree to that. I, I think that we could go back to something, maybe we can come up with some kind of an idea around that. But for trading athletics for free for a fifth day payment, I, I don't think that would work, just because there'd be costs associated with running that athletics. But I do appreciate thinking that way, though.
And I'll be honestly.
I, I, I think for this committee has the same, has the same issue in terms of fuel costs that are, that are not being driven. If the buses aren't being used on that Friday, if the fuel's being used, all the drivers' time being used, probably for less than athletic, less time for athletics event and a full day of school, I think that's a pretty good point from our side. And that's where I think we wanna talk about that a little more.
I mean, I'm not comfortable, honestly, RJ, giving any money to Durham without services rendered. And I'm just trying to think of a creative solution, and that's the only one I can really foresee us having a need for. Otherwise, I kind of feel like paying revenue for, you know, you know, something that's not gonna be received here for the district is not in our best interest. I mean, you have, um, you know, costs to meet, we do too. We've lost a lot. So you're not the only person that's in this very, you know, unfortunate and difficult circumstance. We're all up against the wall here financially, and we've had to incur significant costs this year to do technology and go above and beyond to make our schools even operational with, you know, all sorts of things. So for us to be paying for something here that we're not getting, it's really not feasible.
Understood. And, and I, I was listening to your, to your, your meeting for, before I was called upon. So I can understand the, the struggles and the issues you're going through. And I have to say that you guys are doing a tremendous job with the, with the tools you have at hand. What I can do, and, and, and again, I, I wouldn't be the one to make the decision on this. What I can do is, is kind of put to the, you know, put in front of the people that I need to go discuss, the fact that we're having a conversation along this line. And I think more than anything else, the fact that we're able to have a conversation like this means the world to I know me and the, and the employees and the people this is attracting. So, um, I, I can go back to the table and, and see if we can come up with something along those lines, something that kind of shows that you're getting something for, you know, paying us. Uh, again, I, I can't promise anything except for the fact that I'll bring it there, and then I'll get it in front of you, you know, right away. I mean, this will be something I'll be doing for homework tonight and tomorrow. And I'll get the information back to Justin as soon as I can.
Mr. Dr. Cooley?
Yes, thanks, RJ. You were, you were kind of broken up, uh, for the last part of what you were talking about. Did you offer up any ideas as to how you could provide a service for us on that Friday that we would pay? I certainly respect both my board mem, uh, board members here who brought up the sports idea. I think, uh, fall sports is coming to a quick end anyways, and I'm not sure how much use of that, like what we would get, would we get our bang for our buck there anyways? But I certainly appreciate us potentially looking into that. But do you have any other ideas that you might have said that we didn't hear? Cause you were cut off about a minute and a half, or maybe less than that.
I apologize for that, and I, can you hear me at this point now?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, great. Um, I'm gonna stand exactly where I am, so I don't move. Just to clarify on the Fridays, i- if there was any athletic trips that would be running on a Friday, and a Friday is that fifth day we're being compensated, that, that's a given. That, you're being, you, you are running transportation at that point right there. We'll have drivers at the ready for you to be used on that fifth day. I, I think just clarification on that was just, i- if it's the sixth day, where it's like a Saturday or something else out of that, out of the difference where they're not working, and you have to trigger that sixth day of pay, I think that's where, where maybe I was not even hearing it right. So, uh, a- again, if it, we're talking like athletics running on a Friday, um, and that day where it's, you know, and, and even as I'm saying this now, as long as it doesn't go past, I guess, is that the hours that we're already gonna be paying the drivers out, meaning that you're gonna be paying, you know, let's just say, three hours a day. And it's more than that, I'm just saying it for conversation. And you have fifteen hours of the run, worth of work out there. And you're running, you know, four days a week, you got the twelve, and then you have three hours left on that Thursday night or that Friday morning, or something on that week. I don't see why there'd be any issue with, with that. I think that that's, that's understandable for sure. It's, it's the extra day, like I said, where we gotta come back out and saying, okay, we already paid them for five days, now we need that additional, you know, pay them, that might be sticky. Does that make any sense, or am I just talking about something you guys are already very clear with, and I was the only confused one?
That makes sense, but did you have any other, as prior to the ideas from the two board members? I'm not asking.
I do, yep. Yeah. Yep, absolutely. I apologize. Um, what I've been doing in, in other districts is we've actually had some areas where there's, there's low cellphone service. We've actually had drivers go out, and we've, we've, um, had hot spot wifi set up for each one of the buses. They've gone to park in neighborhoods and sat there for, you know, the, the time period that we've identified as needing for the kids to be homeschooled. We've done that in some, you know, northern areas. Uh, we've done, um, food deliveries. areas. We've done food deliveries. We've done, we've actually moved teachers from different sites and been there for almost kind of a Uber service for the school at that point, going from location to location. I think I already said, we've done food deliveries. And, you know, more so than anything else is that we just want to make sure that we're available for any calls or questions or ideas that come up through the district. You know, some of the ones, even the ones we're doing a food delivery for, that was something we didn't notice, we didn't know we'd be doing until actually we come to an agreement. And they said, hey, listen, we have this coming up. And I said, absolutely, we're here for you. And that became something we were doing. And that just started with us just saying that we have the availability, you have the availability of our ten, in this case, 10 drivers for that fifth day.
Mrs. Forbes?
Hi, RJ. So, I wanted to say, I appreciate everything you do, and we do have some great drivers. And I so appreciate the fact that they were willing to come back to work. My business, my background is business. So, I guess, I really want to help you out. I totally understand from financial perspective that you have expenses that have not changed for you. I get that, as do we. We're all in a financial pickle here. And I guess what I am, you know, what keeps resounding in my mind is that our contract is up, and we have a business relationship. And we are certainly working to keep that relationship strong by helping you out when you've come to us. And I would expect, or I hope to expect, that you will be doing the same for us when we're renegotiating the contract, knowing that our financial situation next year and going forward may be very different.
Understood. And I think that you're in the same position as some other contracts that are coming up this year. And I can say that, you know, working with Justin and Dr. Nash at this point now has been, you know, really great. I think we're making some good strides here. The team we have is on point. Even the additions we've made over year over year have been great. And I could think of nothing better than continuing it with you. And I can tell you that when we come to the table and we have a negotiating contract, we'll do the best we can so that, you know, it works for both of us. It's certainly not gonna be a one-sided deal, I can tell you that.
That's what I'm hoping for. Thank you.
Thank you. RJ, I think, again, I thank you for your time. I think at this stage, I think we've kind of, the next step would be negotiate with Justin in terms of what that 50%, that 90% numbers that you're looking for, for the payments, in terms of calculating time, if we do, if we do want to talk about sports in there. And again, be good faith, because as you said, our drivers are home, most of our drivers are homegrown and live in the town. They're a part of the community. They're great to our kids. They're vastly underpaid, and you know, but that's, and that's not your fault. And it's not our fault, anyone's fault. It's the nature of the problem. And it's the nature of the industry, I guess. They're dedicated employees, and we do, I think, we do what I feel is take care of our employees. And so, at this stage, unless there's any other questions for you, I think you and Justin have some good points to continue the negotiation, that we can come back, and how are we gonna work this out, so both sides can get a benefit out of it.
Excellent. Well said, and I appreciate your time, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We will put together some draft proposals and kind of go from there, and we'll have the committee review and approve anything we, you know, obviously do going forward. Like I said, I don't see why there's any reason why we can't come to an agreement. Might not be the same percentage that we discussed. It might not be the same services, but I don't see, there's no reason why we can't come.
Yeah, I think it's gonna work.
Just a quick follow-up question. I don't know, are we having Wi-Fi spot issues? Is that something in our town that we have areas with terrible Wi-Fi? We've worked on all that, correct?
We did, and then we purchased those hotspot devices. If a parent goes into the tech port, you know, help and says, I'm having that, then actually, I know that Kadian has gone and purchased, and I know, I think Rob even delivered one to a parent.
Okay, so we're not having any kind of trouble with the issue?
No, we don't hear that at all.
Okay, great.
And actually, you know, Kadian has not ever brought that up.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Just on that issue, and it may be kind of off-topic, but, and so, you know, Mr. Chair, if this is not the right time to bring it up, I think the only time that the town did have that issue with kind of our Wi-Fi is when we had that big, huge windstorm a few weeks ago, and lots of Wi-Fi went out through the community. And I can personally attest to calling the school and saying, my kids can't get on. And I was very surprised to see them marked absent, because, you know, they're still working remotely, they're still trying to do everything that they can do.
I think that's a great point of discussion.
And I don't like to see them marked absent.
Hardly what that...
Absolutely.
Until your time?
Yeah, certainly.
Yep, so we'll stay on track of that. So, I think we do want to carry that conversation a little bit further. So, if you put that into your...
I will.
If you remember, Todd, I think that'd be most appropriate.
Thank you. The next agenda item that I have for you is a, just informational only, just a custodial manual. In fact, it's a cleaning and disinfecting guidelines for the schools. Just to kind of give you how this came to be, we had very many meetings over the summer of facilities and operation team, as to, you know, how we're gonna reopen, what we're gonna do. One big part of that was discussions surrounding cleaning and whether it's gonna be the cleaning protocols going forward, because as we know, it's not gonna be the same as it was prior to March last year. So, I really want to capture that into a document in case parents, school committee members, anybody, staff had questions, well, jeez, this is what we're doing, and it can at least go through and give people an idea, or actually tell them straight what we're doing. So, I'll just touch on some of the highlights, things that are highlighted in here. Cleaning procedures if somebody has been sick, some explanations about deep cleaning, and maybe some myths about deep cleaning, and how it's kind of a buzzword sometimes. Proper PPE usage, prevention of cross-contamination, high-touch areas defined, and the frequency of, you know, how often needs to be cleaned, highlight products we use for disinfecting, like the SDS sheets. And lastly, custodial cleaning checklist, which is checklist that we've had, but they've now, we've added the high-touch areas, maybe some other areas that need more attention now, and due to COVID. I will let the committee know that this is a, like most documents, a dynamic document. In fact, I already have three or four changes off the top of my head that need to be updated. We did get some electrostatic sprayers in, so those need to be added as part of the cleaning protocols. And microfiber, and having discussions with our custodial staff, a lot of them use cotton. And it's, well, jeez, you know, maybe we should go to a microfiber, specifically color-coded, to prevent cross-contamination. You know, you would use one color, maybe a room where a sick child has been versus another area. So, it's just little things like that that are addressed on the manual. Again, this is just informational only. I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
I thank you for the work on that. It is a working document, and we understand that.
Thank you. Looks great. Thank you.
All right, and then, I wonder how late before?
The next item I have for you are the capital requests for two, and the prioritization. Now, since the last time we met, the superintendent and myself did meet with our facilities director to go over, he believes that the priority should be, to kind of hear it, straight from the source here, as to what, what should we be doing. So, I'll just go over those items with you now, just quickly. He said number one would be the foundation repairs at the elementary schools. Just to back up a little bit, that the document from the engineer that had done the analysis, did the analysis probably three years ago, he didn't have a timeframe for completion. However, the facilities director said that this would certainly be the top item. To kind of put it in perspective, I wouldn't let it happen in my house, put it that way. You know, if my foundation wasn't that far disrepair, I mean, I'd certainly have it addressed. Because now you're gonna start getting, having structural issues, is the bottom line with the elementary schools. Surprisingly, the, well, I say surprisingly, I'm not the expert here, but the boiler replacement at the middle school was his second. And the reason why he said that, he did give us some more information that we did not know. They did replace one of the boilers there, but it was replaced with a half-size unit. So, it's enough to keep the building going. However, if another one of those large units were to die, then we were gonna have some serious problems. This is more of a precautionary item, to have the funds on hand in case this were to happen. I mean, we talked worst-case scenario, if we were not to fund this item, and the boiler were to die, what will we do then? Well, it's gonna come from somewhere, and we don't want to be in that situation. And that's just the type of conversation we had, is what it boiled down to. So, it was more of a precautionary item, and he said that it would be number two, just based on the situation we're in. He said the siding repairs, Barton and Chaffey would be at number three. Now, that dollar amount, I'll be honest, I don't feel as though the town will be able to fund that. However, that doesn't take it off the table. Perhaps we could make a recommendation to the finance committee, maybe we put a little bit aside every year until we have enough to redo the siding. I mean, that's just, just an option. I mean, again, to put it in perspective, what would you do at your house? If you had major issues with your siding, you didn't have the money at the time, maybe we should save towards it.
Right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is that something that the town could consider a capital outlay for? I mean, if it's a major repair that needs to happen, and it's something that we keep postponing, we're gonna have structural and integrity damage to the school and possibly mold, is that something that should be handled like ASAP, instead of putting a little bit of money aside and hoping we'll get there eventually, which might not happen considering our budgetary circumstances here?
And using the library as an example?
Right, right.
To answer your question, I don't, nothing's off the table. That's certainly an option to do that. I would have to work with folks on the town side to see what would work best for the town to finance the project, to be honest with you. So, yeah, that's certainly an option. We could put that out there.
I mean, it's not, it's not that I want to see the money go there. It's just...
I think, Mrs. Griffin, you address a real crux of an issue when you're dealing with a project that might be a half a million out. Question is, most towns aren't gonna have that money.
Right.
No matter when you look for that. Planning for it usually doesn't happen.
Right.
And so, a lot of times, you couple this with some of your other major outstanding issues in town, and get support out and do a vote, and it's a one-time deal. And people recognize it. So, yeah, it could be an approach, and they may have some other items also. So, sometimes it's a win-win, because you have a school item that you want, but you have another outstanding town item for one of their buildings.
So, it's one of those things. We feel that we certainly bring it forward. We don't want to, as soon as we get onto the road, we'll put it out there, and then we'll see what we can, see what we can do for, working with the town. Four and five, the recommendations were the Barton and Chaffey electronic door access. I mean, however the committee would feel, they wanted to do what, you know, we've started at the high school, middle school's currently underway, so we're kind of working backwards. That's been the, you know, from the highest levels back to the younger kids. And lastly, excuse me, six and seven, were the replacement, Chaffey and Barton flooring replacements, starting with Chaffey being six and Barton being seven. And again, this is, this is a recommendation from the finance director, Michael Lupus. And parking lot crack fill, as the committee had identified. Is it gonna be an issue? Yes, it'll be an issue when the town eventually is gonna have to address it. Just, I guess, from a few folks' perspective, it's a low priority item, and get it. But we still want to put it out there, and you know, we don't want to ignore it. So, that's all I have. That was the recommendation from the facilities director.
And again, this is a recommendation of, of the facilities director.
And we can, we can throw with it. You know, we met and listened to his explanation. Obviously, we sent forward these to the FinCom. You'll have that opportunity in early...
November 4th.
To discuss this in more detail, and to get a sense maybe even. Particularly, I have a concern about the envelope of these buildings. I noticed it two years ago, and just the other day when I was at Barton, you can see that it's getting worse. It's only a matter of time, and I don't think that just pushing it off and thinking that you're gonna save up, it's probably gonna run you, my hunch would be somewhere between 500 to a million, quite frankly. I don't think 400 is gonna do it. When I looked at the building, and again, I have no expertise, but just knowing the way costs are today, I, you know, I don't see that. I think it's gonna have to have, it could be similar to what they, they had with the library, in a different sense. I don't know what's under that. And that's the question.
And that's huge. And I think with this committee, to take the vote on the priority, which puts it to the finance committee, and we have the background, the paperwork to say it's gonna be fixed. We're stewards of the buildings. Now, people turn the buildings to us, and it's our job, hey, they're broken, we gotta fix them. Okay.
Yeah, they got problems.
I'll intend a motion to accept the prior list prioritization schedule as laid by Mr. Wadu. Ziva?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Second for a discussion? They're not all the steward, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I believe it's November 4th.
Yeah.
Is, I believe it's only the school will be going first. I don't think there's any other departments. However, I have asked Michael Lupus to join us, just to...
And if you wanted to, if you want to attend, please let Helen know. I don't know what the space requirements are. I will be attending a person. I don't know if everyone can attend a person. You might have to get it online, like, please let Helen know.
Thank you. Now, finally, the last item I have for you is the budget-to-actual report through September. I don't have anything to report at this time, with respect to the budget-to-actual. September was a fairly quiet month. I mean, we had, we had staff back, training. However, that's all you really see as far as expenditures are concerned, that is mostly staff salaries, and just the encumbrances for utilities and certain things we do for the year. Other than that, there hasn't been anything major that's come through, thankfully. It's only September. In this report, I should say. It's only September. We're reflecting on paper. I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
We'll do. Easy night. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Justin.
Easy night, but good luck tomorrow.
Donate.
Oh, your donation, yes.
Curly.
Oh, excuse me.
I knew that.
I was aware that there was a new policy to be adopted tonight, will potentially be adopted tonight. With that said, I was approached by Curly last week to see if we needed any supplies for the, for the schools. And I had, just recently had a conversation with our head nurse, and said, well, jeez, we could use some additional face masks, specifically child masks, as, you know, they're much smaller, and face shields. So, I just emailed her back, the woman I spoke to from Curly, and said, you know, we could use some child masks and face shields. And she actually emailed me back this morning and said, I have them available for pickup. Where would you like me to donate them? So, with that said, I did forward the email to Helen, to the chair, to see if the school committee would like to accept the donation for the masks and the face shields.
Make a motion?
Just checking with our...
Accept this donation? Curly?
Oh, I'd love to make that motion. I was just running by the new policy to make sure.
We approve these types of...
Second it.
We'll have a discussion. Discussion, they, obviously they plan.
It's mine to send their plane, just the...
We'll double-check that.
Like, we certainly... Not allow them if there is...
They do well enough. They don't need...
Because I think, I think what sort of happened, this policy went in place before we did the early one from Mr. Schelmer. I bet you there was a Y-Sol on that, somewhere on that piece that came out. But that's all right. That came in pre-policy.
Boom. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I was afraid, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and please get a ladder for them.
Could I just, could I ask just a quick question on that? Where are we with PPE funding and money? Like, it sounded like, did we need this because we couldn't provide it ourselves? Or was this just the top of the list when they asked what we needed?
No, it just happened to be the top of the list when they asked. I just happened I'd be having a conversation with the head nurse at the time, just checking in, saying, what do we need for PPE? We seem to be in good shape as far as masks. We have plenty of masks. The face shields is what we surprisingly went through quickly. We bought 50 for 25 staff members, assuming everybody would get two. And they are not disposable, they are reusable. So, I'm a little surprised that we went through them that quickly. And the child masks, we did not order that many child masks. We ordered, you know, your standard size. We ordered some, thinking they would primarily be used at Chaffey School, but perhaps maybe some of the kids a smaller part in school. So, that might have just been an oversight, that we didn't get enough to last, you know, three months. an oversight that we didn't get enough to last, you know, three months. We had enough for a few weeks to get us started. Um, with respect to just PPE in general, we spent about 40 or 50 grand, um, at the beginning of the year. That was funded through a FEMA grant on the town side. So we're able to get a lot of our supplies through that to not impact our operational budgets. Um, so we still do have our S R and cares money available if we do need more.
All right. I just, I, I mean, I, I wasn't trying to be an alarmist. I just, when, you know, the offer was what do you need? I understand in this day and age, PPE is probably like the first thing on our minds, but as long as we have the capacity to obviously continue to purchase down the line, could be out in October, so.
We still have our grant funding available and this is a donation.
Perfect. That's good.
We're in good shape.
Yep. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, so, good evening. Uh, so typically, uh, as we begin the, uh, budget, uh, season and we start planning for next year's budget, I come to the school committee to get a directive, uh, from you since you oversee budget as to the type of budget or budgets you would like us to build. And in doing that, I normally, uh, somewhere in early fall, have a meeting, uh, with the town manager, director of finance, our, uh, business administrator, and we discuss the fiscal health of the town. Well, this is not a normal year, uh, and certainly given the fact that the state hasn't even, uh, approved its FY21 budget, uh, you can understand that. So I provided you with the information. The meeting did not take place. Uh, we, I had asked for one and I certainly understand, um, at this early juncture for them, uh, they are looking, uh, as I provided you with that direct quote, uh, looking for their departments, uh, school being one of them, uh, to develop an FY22 budget that is really in keeping with the, the figure, um, that you had in the prior year. And that figure, uh, was, uh, 18,066,975 prior to the October 7th, uh, special town meeting where, uh, departments, in this case, the school department, uh, were, um, at, given an additional $100,000. So what at this point in time, the town, um, finance director and the town manager are recommending is that the school department, uh, develop, uh, a level funded budget. So, uh, having said that, I also wanted to point out by way of background, the concerns certainly that I think all towns and cities have, not as much about this year, but what has happened this year in the state of Massachusetts really sets the framework, I believe, uh, for next year. And that is that most recently, uh, Massachusetts still has not had, uh, its budget for FY21 approved, but that the governor has moved forward to add an additional $45 billion to that budget. And he has balanced that FY21 budget by pulling monies from the rainy day fund. Uh, and I think that was, uh, well over a few billion dollars. And also the federal, the one-time federal monies that states received as a result of COVID. And it is the understanding of the commissioner, when he spoke with us last week, um, that we should be okay, that cities and towns this year should remain rather unscathed with respect to chapter 70. And which would coincide with the fact that at the October meeting, um, the town manager, uh, felt obviously the same way in that she could free up monies to give back to departments and in this case, the school department picking up the extra 100,000. However, um, as the, the, both the town manager and I discussed early on last spring and what seems to be at this point in time, um, some feelings that are being echoed by the commissioner of education is that FY22 could be significantly impacted, particularly given the fact that revenues, uh, in the state could be down. The governor is balancing FY21 budget on monies that are one-time from the feds unless the feds come up with another stimulus package, which could very well happen for states for next year. Uh, as well as the fact that we're dipping into, um, to the billions, the rainy day fund. I believe, I recall the rainy day fund was somewhere up around 5 billion plus. And now I think it has been dissipated and it's around 2 billion. It sounds like a lot of money, but it isn't really. So the outlook, uh, doesn't look great for FY22 and which obviously may be the reason that the, the town manager is being cautious about requesting departments develop, uh, budgets and keep their budget figures the same as the year before. But as the committee knows, when we talk about a level, um, funded budget, it's typically a reduction budget. Um, not typically, it is a reduction budget and it's a reduction budget because we know that we have known cost as well as anticipated costs. The known cost that most school districts have would be any contractual obligations, um, that you have negotiated. And then we know that there are costs that on a year-to-year basis, uh, fluctuate and could rise. You heard this evening, uh, the presentation that we, when we talked about dorm, our contract is up. Uh, I have never seen contracts that tend to go down the following year, though I would concur with Mrs. Forbes that I hope that there would be some consideration if dorm were to bid, um, and we were to do something, um, this year. We also know that sped costs, sped is a very volatile area. Uh, we know that those can fluctuate uh, along with staffing as a result of IEPs. So the known and anticipated cost certainly mean that when you open your door next year and someone says to you it's, it's level funded, it's a reduction budget. There's no two ways about it. On the other hand, uh, most districts and many districts in a, a sense to be, uh, frugal or to, um, continue to support programs that they currently have, uh, will at the minimum develop a level services budget. And, and just for purposes of clarification, when I talk about a level services budget, where really, as someone once said to me, you open the door next year with the same number of staff, while they may be reassignments, um, you're not going to lose staff. All right. So you're meeting those obligations. You're keeping the staff. You certainly may use some staff differently. You may have the ability to reassign them, uh, because of class size or erosion somewhere else. But you basically are, uh, opening the door next year with the same programs and services and at least the staffing. Your programs may look a little different that you currently have. Uh, most school districts are building those budgets and then there are those districts that also want to look at, well, how do we have a plan for the future? How do we look at what makes sense? Some districts call it an additional needs budget. I call it an educationally sound budget, uh, for lack of a better word. But how do we really plan for the future? How do we look at what we need? You know, we talk about things and we say, gee, wouldn't that be great? They're not wish list items. They are items that will move this district. They are items that will say, that people will say, this is why I want to send my child to a district. This is why they have those types of things, such as every kid has a, has a laptop. That is not as common as one would think. I had a conversation with a neighboring assistant superintendent today and he asked how, about our program. One of the things he said was, oh, you have laptops for every kid? We do and we had them last spring. That prohibits districts from doing some things. We talked about staff. I think this committee talked about some positions that you would like to see kept for next year. Um, we certainly heard that. I have some ideas. My administrative team has. And so I think it's important to not create a wish list, but to constantly think about how do we move a district? How do we prepare for the future? That's what the additional needs budget, um, does. So having said that, I presented on that last page, really a proposal to you. Because I know that, uh, you certainly have, uh, want to consider, uh, any type of budget and we will build the type of budget you want. Uh, but I would suggest to you that we in essence build what I call two budgets and then we, the third budget is, is really a, a layering of the second budget. That we would start with a level services budget. We will see where that takes us. Whether that figure of 18,1, um, will support a level services budget, I cannot tell you because I was not here last year and I do not know the intimate details of this budget, but I will. And then from that, look at and ask our administrative team, uh, and also the fact that you have weighed in and we have some understanding of some of the additional programs, services, not, and when I say programs, I mean instructional resources too, as well as personnel that we might need. Uh, we are looking this week at, in reviewing and reprioritizing your instructional resources, um, uh, document that was prepared, uh, from 2018 through 2020 and reprioritizing that because I think that will have some type of budget impact. Um, because I know there are some items there that, um, should come to the forefront. So we're doing that and we'll have that discussion on Thursday afternoon. The building principals have reprioritized it for their buildings and then we're going to reprioritize that for the district. So I say that because I can see the potential of some of those items making it on the additional needs budget. It's not just about personnel. It's about some big ticket items that we really need, um, regardless of whether we have personnel so that we can deliver, um, an educationally sound budget. Uh, and then to just hear that, by that I would mean that we will come back to you and say, here's how we prioritize it. And if you were to add this, it would bring your budget to here, would bring it to here, would bring it to here, each one. Each one of those items or areas that we are looking at. So that's, uh, what I would propose to the committee to consider, but certainly, uh, you may have some other ideas, um, that you would wish me to consider.
I think that's great, Dr. Nash.
Thank you.
Well done.
Uh, Dr. Nash, do you have anything else to say?
Uh, no, I don't. I don't.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask just the committee to take a vote on that?
I was just going to say.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, simply because I think going forward it would be important for me in my discussions with the town. I'd like to make a motion to approve this proposal.
I'll second that motion.
With, with the rec- with the recommendation of.
Having a tiered budget.
Having a tiered budget.
The.
Based upon.
Conclusion. I would build the three budgets.
Well, just as.
Three budgets.
The three budgets in the ballpark is right.
Yes.
And same, okay. That's, that's the most.
So I just make a motion to accept the, um, proposal that Dr. Nash has presented with the, the bulleted conclusions to develop, um, a level service budget, an educationally sound budget, which is their budget two, and then a tiered budget, which is the budget number three.
I'll second that motion.
Will be seconded for a discussion. Oliver, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Group record show five in the front.
Also, just for your purposes, we provided you with the budget timeline. So you know some dates for some meetings. I know that there's, uh, one scheduled meeting in December for you, but do note that the presentations for all of the administrative team, for their preliminary budgets for you to have discussion with, um, will occur, I think, the week of the 16th and the 21st or something like that. So just, just for you to have that and pin that up on your.
And we get the calendar.
This may change.
What's going on my calendar?
Calendar invited out, um, yesterday anyways.
Yeah. Uh, it isn't, yeah. The only thing I will say is when we compare this to the town budget, um, their outline, it doesn't, um, seem to, uh, compare well. Uh, because there are some dates where you should be voting on your budget in January and that is not typically what happens. So I'm not sure. Um, I think we might have to have some discussion with that, with them to see that. That, that really can't happen in January. You don't want to have that. Usually the House, House one or Senate may not even be out then, so. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Nash. Okay. Uh, next item of business is, unfortunately, we do have to make, start making some decisions. Okay, in terms of superintendent, so the superintendent search. Uh, we do have a new policy that we're, that we're in place now and I'm glad it did for the recruitment and appointment of superintendent. So I'm going to refer to this policy and glad that it went through is that, and again, I just want to be transparent. Going through this, uh, there are steps and as a sitting chair, I will attain to those steps. But in fairness, is that I will not be running for reelection. So as this process is unfolding, there'll probably be another chairman in there. So I'll be asking someone of this board committee to chair selection process, to chair a superintendent search committee. So there is fluidity as it goes forward with that. So that's something that we want to go in the, it's obviously not a time for a future meeting, but just to put it out there and we want to look at the policy. And under the policy of, I have a bad C B D. But tonight we'll talk about the process and timetable. Policy is, chairman of school commission shall establish a timetable for the selection process, including, including closing date for application, initial meeting of the search committee, approximate date of selection of superintendent and closing dates for the appointment. The school committee shall determine by majority vote whether to engage the services of a consultant. So tonight, and again, this is just starting the process and I'll come up with a formal timetable, is that we do have, oh, if you have a chance, you may want to do some research in terms of the consultant. We're looking into consulting. We have two types in that Helen has provided up information, middle and school development council and M A F six. Both are very good. Both are renowned, renowned. We used last time, the chair time offered not to go with a consultant. The time before we, you know, on interim search, we did go with a consultant. When, um, I think I was, I was the chair of the search committee. I was vice chair on the board at that time. So if we're ready to move forward on this, if we're on with the direction we're going for, uh, we can set that timetable. This will probably be almost a standing agenda item. It's a superintendent search for where we go. But I just want to make members aware, you know where the policy is, um, our, our timetable. I'll be working with the timetable and hopefully we are, we are the chairman of the search committee. I would like to work with that person on developing a timetable that works. Dr. Nash, again, it's, it was wonderful. We've had this, we had this conversation almost about a month ago. Here's that now, we, district is in a good spot right now with COVID. I think that, that she really brought a sense of urgency to, to our faculty on how things are going to change, but also the support that was needed to undergo the changes. Uh, we're looking at probably a posting, I would say somewhere in January with a higher date of March to April, with a start date of July, July 1. By starting too soon, it really impacts your, your candidate pool. If you stop searching right now, you're going to get superintendents that are probably not happy in the district, that are probably sensing some, feeling some tension that it gives time to like, oh, the votes aren't going my way. It's time to move on. Or, and some people aren't looking yet. I mean, anyone that, in my opinion, that's worth their weight, they're so impacted by day-to-day decisions and, and reconfiguring, if, if it's a curriculum specialist, if it's a principal, assistant superintendent, someone that's on the upper level that's qualified to be a superintendent, they're up to the neck and work right now. They don't have time to be looking for a job. And so we really want to get a good candidate pool. Um, so we, we do have some decisions to make, but just so we have a timetable and you know where I stand on it. And I'll take any questions if people have and we're ready to move forward.
Well, we've taken a, when do we take a vote on whether we want to have a consultant?
So, would you mind if I could, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, okay.
We could schedule some time. We could see if, if both NesDek and Mask were available to do a presentation to you before you make your decision at your December meeting or your November meeting, whatever you want, wherever we can find the time. Uh, and they could come in and present to you and then at your next meeting or that same night, you could make a decision if you'd like to, to, um, hire either one. Probably tonight you want to talk about whether you want to do the search yourself or whether you want to go with a consulting firm.
Exactly. Okay. So yes.
Do we, do we have any rough estimate of what that costs? Because I'd.
Ten thousand to 40,000.
It's a new, a new pack of actually.
You don't have to go to the.
I touched with 30, 35,000 to 40, to 40. That's what you want to get.
So NesDek includes one that has a strategic plan and that takes you to the 40. I can tell you, we hired, uh, Dudley Chalston hired, um, a consulting firm last year and that cost was $9,600.
We, we, we went through it, M A S C before. It was about, it was, it, it all turned about 10 grand at the very end. Cause we, cause we did lean on him a little more for a few things to commit review. to commit reviews of our culture. And I tell you what, using the consultant, gets the background of their job, their position, where they've been, personality traits. It was a pretty extensive document that was sent in interview. Or, and he would say, okay, here's so-and-so coming in, and he is good in this area, he's very good in this area. His reports are great, he's a great writer. This is areas that he needs some work. So he, and so this is coming out of, he looks at past evaluations that they've gotten their jobs, and he does a really thorough, it was a very thorough process. My, my, my recommendation would be to spend the money. At what level, we can decide. And then when they, and then to interview them and decide if that's what, what they're saying they're going to do. And they do this all the time. They know the candidates, and they know the pool out there. And they also know the dynamics of Oxford, what works and what doesn't work.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted, what escalates the price is the advertising. The Education Week, which if you were looking, which is a, which is a national magazine. I'm not suggesting that you would advertise. But I know that a number of years ago, when we looked at advertising in that magazine, it was starting at five thousand. And I know that ads, no one uses, you know, newspapers anymore, partly because the cost just kept escalating. So either one of these organizations obviously has a broad-based distribution via, you know, their connections as well as, you know, their mailing list. You know, to this date, I think everyone who's retired still gets mailings for current superintendent positions, no matter what. Once you're a superintendent, they seem to come out, unless you doubt.
What is the cost? Is there a school spring cost to post it on school spring? Or what's the downside of only doing it on school spring?
Well, it's, it's really a district choice. I happen to notice, because I subscribe to Education Week, that Dover Sherbonne is out looking for a superintendent to begin their search. And they advertise there. But I do not see many districts use it because I know what the cost, you know, what the cost was a number of years ago. It just depends on some, some communities believe that if they don't do a broad national search, they're not going to get quality candidates. And I don't necessarily think that that's the case. So, you know, I think one can do a, you know, a search in this area, a search, you know, in Massachusetts. And certainly, I know that either one of these firms knows the candidate pool. And knows who's out there looking, who they think is ready, you know, who they are kind of, in a sense, have a good sense of where they are, knows about superintendents who might be looking down the road. I agree with the chair. I, I think this is an exceptional year. And I think any superintendent worth their druthers is not about to walk out of a district, given, given where we all are. So I think that, you know, while I'm not saying no one, because someone may have made that decision prior to all of this happening. I do think that again, the has been scarce in the last, you know, five, 10 years. It's gotten, you know, a lot scarcer. And the traditional methodology by which someone kind of moves up the ranks has disappeared. Typically, one would move up and be a building administrator, and then become a central office administrator, and then move into a superintendent. You're not seeing that. You're seeing principals move into superintendencies. You know, you're seeing, you know, just, there's not a lot of people who are looking for this job. There are a number of districts who have already opened up their searches. I saw a few of them. I know that Dover Sherbonne is one. I know there are a couple on the North Shore. I've not seen any or heard anybody in your area yet who's looking, nor do I know of any superintendent in our area right now who's retiring, so.
And also, too, and I'll know the September chair had a question. And again, the difference between Oxford and Dover Sherbonne in terms of the offered salary.
Right.
That's, that's expected for nation, for national search to bring someone in where, just like the city of Boston would, and the city of Worcester as well, is what the pay rate is. I think we're, we're in the moderate and probably right in the middle in terms of Massachusetts, the state of Massachusetts in the area. And we obviously want to come from it. Just for.
I just wanted to back up what you said, Dan. As far as using the consulting firm, I think that they are an invaluable resource to us, and having served on the committee, it was a daunting task. And I think when you have someone else who knows all of the things that I personally don't know, is so helpful. So, I mean, I, I would be willing to make a motion to make that decision to use a consulting firm and to work out the details after we've had a presentation.
Motion for, do I have a second? I'd second it. Will be second discussion, Mr. Gragge, all your head up.
Yeah, I mean, we're not locked into this, right? We're just, tonight, we're approving whether we want to hear more about consulting firms. Because I'm going to go on the record and say, I would prefer to do this on our own. But I certainly would like to hear what they can offer. So would these presentations be live?
Yes.
Or they just give us like a, so you're going to have both competitors come in essentially and present?
Helen's going to schedule them. And however the scheduling works out, if we can get both in the same night, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm definitely hoping they're listening to them. But the cost certainly concerns me because I don't want to be, you know, putting a lot of money into something that, you know, I think we have a lot of expertise on this board to be able to, to do a solid search in our community members. So, yeah, I'm open to hearing their, their discussion or their proposals. I'm certainly not locked into them.
Right, and again, they put Rangers in here. They'll come in with an actual, a sales presentation.
Yeah, that's what I want to see.
We want to sit through the presentation.
I'm for that, that's what I, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Can I go in?
Yes.
Oh, yes, following affirmative to schedule appointments, to schedule appointments for interviews with a possible search committee. So we are again in the motion. And again, this is really a pretty standing factor when you start going through the issue. One of the next things we want to do is come up with a chair of the search committee, a vice chair of the search committee. And then we can go about with a public, we schedule a public hearing and continue the process and timeline. So that's community members for thinking. We can politic within each other on who wants to do what and make recommendations. At our next, at our next meeting, I'll entertain motions for that. Get everything?
Yes, the only recommendation I might make is before anyone volunteers to chair, you might want to wait until you decide whether you're going to hire an outside group because there'll be a big difference in workload if you're hiring someone from the outside to assist. I think you still need a chair to work as liaison if you hire an outside firm. And that would be a little bit less, you know, obviously onerous for someone. And you could make that decision as opposed to having to orchestrate the entire search itself.
Which is a lot of legwork.
Daunting.
Yes, it is. But even, even still, you still, even if you still hire a firm, you still have your legwork you have to do, make your phone calls. It's more like they organize it for you, but that's a decision to be made. Okay. Um, let's see.
Warrant report, I think.
Yes.
All right, so I have a warrant report for you this evening for October 26, 2020. So we have an accounts payable warrant that was signed on October 6, 2020 for forty-one thousand, five hundred, twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. A food service warrant on October 6 for 2020 for five thousand, ten dollars and eighty cents. An account payables warrant for October 13, 2020 for seventy-four thousand, one hundred, two dollars and five cents. A payroll warrant for October 15, 2020 for five hundred, seventy-three thousand dollars, I'm sorry, five hundred, seventy-three thousand, five hundred, sixteen dollars and fifty-one cents. An accounts payable warrant for October 20, 2020 for a hundred, ninety-four thousand, one hundred, twenty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. A food service warrant for October 20, 2020 for eight thousand, three hundred, five dollars and fifty cents. And an accounts payable warrant for October 27, 2020 for ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred, thirty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
Wonderful, thank you.
And then there was just one thing on the warrant that stood out for me. I did sign it, and I don't know if anybody else saw it. And it was the football helmets and football gear. So did anybody notice the cost of those items? And any thoughts on it?
Mr. May is not here.
No, he's not.
We can check it down. Was it for the, was it for, I did not see it.
It was for fifteen thousand dollars for helmets. And then I think there was jerseys and other things, and it came to a total cost of about thirty thousand dollars in equipment.
Which is normal.
It is normal, and I'm sure it's coming from, you know, revolving fund for athletics. I just thought it was a large amount of money. I feel comfortable now knowing that we actually made an approval for some sports happening.
Right.
But before that, I was very much like, what are we doing? What are we doing?
I mean, these, these would have been ordered last, in the past budget process. And I know personally, helmets and shoulder pads have to be recertified every single year.
Yeah.
And a lot of them go out. A helmet probably, probably costs about two hundred dollars. Shoulder pads can cost up to three hundred dollars.
Yeah, it was two hundred and ninety-nine dollars for helmet.
Yeah, it's, they are, and again, with this, with the concussion, the safety protocols, it's a very expensive piece of equipment. And then, like I said, they have to be certified. We only have a left expectancy of four to five years.
They outlive their life expectancy.
They go real quick.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, and they're reconditioned every year, too. They are sent off for reconditioning, and then inspection comes back and there's a neck and it's gone. And usually, what they like to do is, I mean, usually about thirteen, fourteen-year-old boys, their head size doesn't change that much. And they issue that to them for the, for the four years. If they play, whatever they play, they like to return that helmet because it does get fitted to their head.
Well, it's cool to know that there's so much behind it and makes me feel a little bit better about the cost because it's, it's a new world to me. So when I saw it, I was like, oh.
Technically, a footballer's, footballer's supposed to be lucky without ice hockey.
And I think our youth.
That's, that's probably the real question.
We'd want to sign off on high time.
Yeah, ice time is perfect. All right, thank you, Mrs. Forbes. Anything else?
Griffin, Griffin, that's okay. It'll be all right.
Mrs. Forbes.
Oh, okay, thank you. I can't wait for the flocking fun. I just have to throw that out there. Thank you, Mrs. Schomer, again, for that KINSA program. I think that's going to be amazing for our families. I want to thank my policy subcommittee. All, all your hard work and your well-thought-out policies that you brought forward, your changes, I appreciate all that time. I want to thank the custodians and cafeteria workers. Those custodians have been working overtime, making sure that the buildings are clean for the kids, cafeteria workers, and whoever I, I want to thank, and whoever was responsible for changing the breakfast and lunch pickup times because I've gotten some positive feedback on that. Is that you, Nick?
Justin.
Justin, thank you, Justin. Somebody, I appreciate that because I had brought that forward last time. Dr. Nash, something that you said tonight that you say a lot that I just want to point out and show my appreciation for. You say so often, I don't know the details of this, fill in the blank, budget, contract, policy, but I will. And I so appreciate that you work so hard for us and so well with the town. So thank you publicly for that. And on my thanking, if everybody recalls at our goal-setting meetings, I think we finally reached the only goal that I was really gung-ho on. And that's how well we work together. We're willing to listen. We're not only listening, but we're hearing what people are saying. And we are making positive strides for the town and the students. So I appreciate all that.
Thanks, Ms. Forbes.
That's it for me.
Mrs. Griffin, I know you started one earlier, but you can.
Yeah, so I'll go back to that soapbox I was on. When we have unforeseen weather that wreaks havoc on internet and other things, I know other communities did like a snow day, but it was because of the technology. And students were forgiven for not being able to get into school. And I know that there was a little bit of forgiveness happening, and I do appreciate that in some, you know, respects. But at the same time, you know, having a child being marked tardy or absent or late, when there's nothing they can do in their power to get, you know, online to get to school. You know, if my kids allowed me, they would have been, you know, if I guess I, if I allowed it, they would have been at the front door banging to get inside because they didn't want to be tardy, late, or missing anything. And when they heard that they were, it struck them to the core because it was out of their control. And I heard that from a lot of constituents. People were pretty upset because the kids had no power to get, you know, literally no power and no, no power to get on there for, you know, to join remotely. So that was a little hard, and I hope in the future, you know, we just kind of take that into account and maybe there's some forgiveness there somehow.
So I, I can only just jump in quick. Instead of us legislating, I know you have admin council. Could you bring up the admin council?
I absolutely will. Yeah, I'll have a discussion, sure.
Because we could easily put a policy together. It's not going to happen. But I do want to, I do want to have a feedback on that.
Could I just chime in on that? I mean, this, you, you're either coded distance learning present or distance learning absent right now. So you really can't be marked late. And there is, I believe it's 28 to 48 hours of forgive, forgiveness time, so to speak, for schools to go back in and change what you coded them that day. So on that day, you would have to code kids DLA because they weren't physically able to access. But if they can show that they accessed later, the schools should be going back and changing.
And I, I mean, personally, my kids were able to access like by 10:00 AM. And they were there for the rest of the day. But, you know, for the first period, they were marked present. And that was kind of hard for them to swallow, you know.
Yeah, we definitely have.
We are getting to the ice season now. That, we couldn't keep these power hours, it's coming, you know, I don't know.
I should have kids like that.
Yeah. I'm blessed to have kids like that.
Appreciate that.
The other thing that has come to my attention is the transition times for tech. I mean, every school is different in technology transition times. So I know, like, you know, some of the elementary kids, they have more downtime. I'm blessed to have kids at all different levels. Of course, my children compare, I'm sure, sure, all of our children compare what's happening in your school, what's happening with your teacher, what's going on. And a common thing that has been noticed is that the middle school kids are fantastic. They're working their tails off, but they don't have a transition period really between one class to the next class. It is like
Two minutes.
Two minutes, if that. They can't go to the bathroom, they can't, they can't get a drink, they can't get a snack. Their cameras have to be on right away. Kind of the expectation is anyways that that's the case and that they're, they're engaged. And, you know, in my district, it's different. And I know it's, you don't want to compare, but our kids have at least 10 minutes of transition time between classes. And they're able to go to the bathroom, they're able to get a break. They're able to make a tech transition between one teacher to the next. And that helps tremendously because the kids are in the right state of frame, like frame of mind to start a lesson as opposed to being frazzled or feeling like, oh, my gosh, I can't go to the bathroom, I can't get a snack. And they can't learn because their head's somewhere else. So I'd like us to reconsider that and kind of look at adjusting that at some grade levels if, if appropriate. And maybe the admin can discuss that at a future meeting.
Thank you.
And then one more thing, I'm sorry, I'm like, oh, well. Again, this is not for me. This one was for some other constituents brought up. But they noticed that their children, you know, at the primary level in particular, you know, they're full go-hang for the academics. And when the special times come and they have to engage in the specials, some kids are able to do it and they still have steam. kids are able to do it, and they still have steam, and then some kids are at the end, and they don't have it. They just, they're, you know, they're exhausted because they've been on the screen too much on those remote weeks, and they're burnt out, and then there's sometimes some follow-up assignments that have to occur outside the special. So if there's homework being given outside and on a special in particular, it's really stressful for parents because most of them are not there, they can't support their kids doing those things, and then they have to come home, and instead of focusing on like the core academics, they have to take time to work on a special, which is above and beyond, in my opinion. I want, you know, personally, I'd want my kid to focus on the core academics, and I wouldn't want my kids stressed out because they couldn't get.
The pumpkin drawing.
Yeah. You know, and I think there needs to be, I know we've had homework policies in the past, and we've looked at certain things, and I think we just need to be cognizant, and I know we really are in this district about social, emotional well-being and health of our kids, and they might need to unfuck, and there should, in my opinion, be no specials homework. It should be something the kids look forward to and don't feel a little bit stressed out about. So that's all, and huge thank you to everybody for like, thinking and evolving and changing on the fly so much and, and flexibility and just being wonderful here. That's all.
Mrs. Griffin, I see Dr. Nash is taking notes.
I know, she's taking copious notes.
So you, you, I believe you'll put, you'll be on the agenda tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sure I will. God bless you, Dr. Nash.
Thursday, Thursday, I'm sorry. Mr. Burke?
All right, I just want to thank Dr. Nash and Mr. Mugen and Mr. May for putting together the, the sports proposal tonight. I think, like Mrs. Forbes said, for some of our kids, whether it's sports or music or arts or, or any of those things, that's, that's the reason they come to school, it's the reason they get excited, and I think we did a, a great thing for some of those students that are otherwise struggling right now. I think for our administrators and our teachers, I think we're, what, three weeks in now to having kids actually in school. I can tell you from experience, most things get easier, this does not, so I want you to know that we're supporting you all for these challenging times ahead, so it's going to be rough.
Yeah. Just, you know, I've said it before publicly, but it's, you know, September just captures everything so well, so thank you so much. I mean, you just touched upon so many great things that are going on, and, and the way you just kind of summarized the meeting and beyond is great, so I really, I really appreciate that as a board member, so thank you. And just to shout out to just the, the staff, the parents, the community and the students. I mean, without that partnership, it's a challenge on a, on a normal quote year, but just to see what's going on with my own children and just talking to fellow colleagues out here, the people are doing an amazing job, so just keep it up. And, you know, it's, the light does not seem to be at the end of the tunnel anytime soon based on if you're following the data and everything, but I think we have a nice platform going, we have a nice system going, so keep it up. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. And that's it. Okay, so we do have, let's open a public comment, then we do an executive session. Open the floor, public comment. It being none? Nick, anything over there? Nope, no one's hands up, good, I'll close the floor. Okay, future business again, please get topics in. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, November ninth. If this stage out, enter. Excuse me, I'll entertain a motion under, enter executive session under MGL, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A, paragraph three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, as an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and will be adjourned directly from executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Second that motion.
Move the second roll call vote. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Cracker, you're in?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Corrigan, vote yes, following affirmative, and we are executive session, and we'll address the new chair.